Let me, Elena, let me know when you're.
We're ready.
You're ready.
There is.
All right. There. My mic on. All right. Good afternoon. It is five after four o'clock on March 25th. I'll.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Twenty-four. Thank you. Twenty-four, twenty-five, three, twenty-four, twenty-five. It's five after four o'clock and we'll call this workshop for the town of Grand Lake to order. We are minus two trustees at the moment. We're expecting trustee Casso shortly. Trustee Ariston is absent and I will acknowledge that at the meeting this evening. We also have with us today our planning commission. James Shockey, Heather Bishop. Why are you looking? Am I in trouble? Who are we missing with you guys, though?
Greg Bench.
Oh, that's right. Greg is in Mexico. I thought, is he joining us by Zoom? Did we see if we could?
Are there any Zoomers?
No Zoomers.
Just boomers on the side.
Lots of boomers.
And, okay. All right. Well, we've got our planning commission this evening and our board of trustees this evening. We are discussing the downtown district planning vision. This is going to be exciting.
Thank you, Mayor. The March 5th meeting, the Grand Lake Planning Commission, several topics were brought by by staff to discuss our code and how it relates to developments that are currently existing and kind of what it all means. One of the goals of that is to be able to provide guidance, have staff be able to provide effective interpretation to development as to what to expect. As we have discussed for many years, that our code is subject to interpretation. So after spending an hour and a half with a planning commission, we felt that it would be in the best interest for everybody to get together. And it was also clear that some of those interpretations are still subject to today's boards and commissions as to what kind of guidance should be given. Now, that's not to say that what I'm looking for is complete consensus. I don't want to be able to tell a developer, oh, they're all going to say the same thing. That's not the goal. We are looking at large-scale developments, not only private development, but also the town's development within the commercial business district. Interestingly, in 2022, the planning commission and the board of trustees met and there was an ordinance that was passed that was designing not only the downtown business district, but also some of the key components in 2022 that were being looked at. So I'd like to start by saying that number one, I didn't ask our planning associates from AERS to be with us because I wanted this to be an open conversation that if we have specific questions about the code, I want those to be specified. I don't want staff interpretation in this conversation right now. Number two is I want us to look at the 2022 ordinance and gauge your support, displeasure, or thoughts on them. I also added recently our first new iteration of the Space to Create project. I received that on Friday from MA Studios. I included this as a structural concept that the town is looking to do. For the planning commission, who did have some questions about zoning in 2021, it turns out that the that the board issued a special use permit to art space development to consider zoning in that area. That's something that the town and the commission and the board are about to be talking about in the future. So without any questions, I'd like Commissioner Chairman Shockey and also Mayor Burquist kind of give us your thoughts of where you feel that we're at with development in the downtown district. We've seen private iterations as well as public iterations of versions that social media has said there was too much glass on the last one that one did. We don't know if that's right or wrong, but it turns out the 2022 ordinance said 50% of it shouldn't be. I'm going to open that up. Commissioner Murray has, if does. So Chairman Shockey, any thoughts?
I guess not right now. Great morning. Pick your, like, space to create or process or just general downtown.
Kind of a recap of your recollection of where we've been over the past couple of years. And I, this, and in fairness, I didn't mean to drop the surprise on anybody with the 22 ordinance. I was doing a deep dive on the S drive. I didn't recall it that we had the ordinance, so.
Yeah, I don't remember that either.
Yeah.
And, and so, so I wasn't, I'm not trying to trick anybody, certainly, but it was like, without presenting this on Friday afternoon, when I found it, I was thinking, man, that's kind of an interesting conversation maker.
Right. Um, I mean, I guess I can just quickly get my thoughts on the downtown. I think, you know, we, we saw recently what was being proposed for the downtown and it seemed like there was a lot of, a lot of feedback that maybe that wasn't appropriate for that large of a scale development, wasn't appropriate for the downtown. And so I brought up to the planning commission on a few different occasions of what do we want our downtown to be? I mean, I don't think people come to the, come to Grand Lake necessarily because we have all the commercial and condominium up above, like you see in many of the resort communities. I think they come because of what we currently have. And so over the past year or so, I've been trying to advocate of ways that we can preserve what we have. We saw what could become of Grand Lake and if you allow it once, it's likely going to continue to replicate itself. So and, and there's varying different opinions of what the downtown should be, even amongst our planning commission. So that's why we talked about having this joint meeting and I appreciate that the board was willing to get together with us and discuss it.
Thank you, James. I, a little bit on the same context as Commissioner Shockey. I do think we're, we're at a precipice right now. We're at a turning point where we really do need to dissect what we want our future to look like with our buildings. There has been, I think we're all, and just we've been exposed to conversation and there's been a lot of conversation in the community on some of the possible building projects, land that has been recently purchased, other buildings that have been purchased, remodels that are currently taking place as to what, as to what we are looking for and, and what we want to really come up with what that is. At this point, I like that we aren't getting into code right now. I think we kind of need to pull back a little bit and start as, as our foundation. Do we like our boardwalks? Do we like a certain framework? Do we like a certain wood, a certain color, not certain colors? Those types of things and come up with what that is and then have planning work on the code process. None of us are, there's too many of us, I feel, too many hens in the hen house, so to speak, to come up with a lot of code that we want to dissect and describe, whereas that's what planning does, is come up with the code for us. So I'd like to really get a feel, and, and I can start with this. I wasn't going to start with it, but I think maybe to give you guys a little bit of an idea of what I'm talking about as far as what type of look do you like. This was brought to me actually through Kirsten Heckendorf, who is joining us today because she and some others are, what did we call it? DAG?
Yep, the Design Advisory Group.
Group. We're calling it, they're a new group, Design Advisory Group DAG, and they're going to be helping us with the space to create. And so she's joining us and, and I had gotten this from her and this is AI and I'll go ahead and pass it around. You guys can take a look. There are two photos. You just scroll over and take a look. And describing what our town currently is, this is what it had come up with. And the other picture, it, it talks a lot about the front, the western feel of the buildings, the facade on the front, the colors.
Can you email that to?
I will try.
Well.
The way that it, the way that it came to me, it was weird.
Okay.
And so that's, but this was just through, through, you know, AI putting in what our town already is, not what we wanted or were looking for. But when we describe what Grand Lake is, this, the two pictures that AI came up with. And so being able to take a look at this type of picture plan, other towns, I know that Frisco has done a lot of work on this as well, keeping up the front facade of the buildings. We're going to be looking at a lot of renovations that are going to need to take place on some of these buildings here soon, too. We already know that there's several that can't be open in the winter. So I'll just kind of put this out there as to what you all, and maybe we could just start with Judy and work our way around as, get a feel for what we're thinking that we like or don't like. You know, we had controversy with some colors a couple of years ago. Been kind of discussing what that looks like.
This color?
That color.
Whatever do you mean, Mr. Man? I'm fine. Honestly, this one's really cushy.
That's interesting.
Yes, I know my bracket's not doing very good.
Mine's broken.
Looks a little Swiss, like.
The mountain even.
But yeah, the mountain does, too.
I'm not on. Last thing, we'll just break it and just be sitting here like on the floor.
So this is, this isn't to all end all, but it is, when we described what Grand Lake currently is, this is what it came up with. So Judy, would you like to?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, but I think the one thing that as far as the looks of our community, it's interesting when you go to other places and see what kind of relationship the buildings have to the, the streets and that kind of thing. I think that's one thing that we don't want, is we don't want something built right on the street. And I, I'm sorry, but I think Frazier is a good example of buildings being too close to, to the streets themselves. And I know we have always had some fairly strict codes as far as colors have been concerned. White, although we are white 60% of the year, is not actually one of the accepted colors in, in the county color code. And, but it's what we are for the majority of the years. I think when you get a chance to look around and kind of study what other communities are doing, although I, I really recognize that Grand Lake is something special. It's not a Frazier, it's not a Winter Park, it's not an Aspen. It's what we want it to be. And I was asked the question about an hour ago about why most people came to Grand Lake over the years. I, I've been here 50 years, so I'm older than the rest of you. But, but the thing that I, that I came up with was we want it to be what it was. It was why people came to Grand Lake, not to see glass buildings, not to see what I call rust buckets, but to, to see the community itself, as what it is, what it was, and what it wants to be. So those, those are my things. I just, when you look at other places, I go to Ireland once in a while and I was very taken in looking at their buildings as to why they have the color codes that they have. And if you'll notice, when you look in, in some of those other communities, why they do that. They don't have a color per se. They have some black doors for residential, but most of them are not. And the reason was because when they had the Great Revolution, they were so mad at the English when the English told them they had to have black doors if they were Irish, that they all went with different colors. Oh, the red and green and yellow and, and it was actually quite attractive to not see brown or green. Or one of the things when I first moved up here and got in the real estate business and started looking at homes, everything was green shag carpet or orange shag carpet. We don't want to be known as a community that is that stagnant. But we don't need to be the rust bucket type feeling that, that I see in a lot of the communities that are being built. So.
Thank you.
That's mine.
That's perfect.
Mr. Murray?
Oh, I'll make a comment. I do, you probably have all seen, they had those sheets of, of the Grand Avenue in the late 50s. And you look at the town, and in fact, I've seen some other reviews of the town, a recent one on that the Grand Lake had just going right down. They had a drone going right through over town. But anyhow, you look at the, you know, from the 50s over there, at the town, this town here, in many respects, it hasn't changed hardly at all. It was basically the same. That being said, I've been here for over 20 years and, and I've seen a lot of grand improvements of the town. Certainly the streetscape has been great for our, not only for our infrastructure, our drainage and everything like that, enhancing the boardwalk and a great project. And, and some of the other projects that have come along since I've been here, you know, the Rocky Mountain Rep Theater, just outstanding, you know, right next door to it, the Broadway Plaza there. Very excellent job done on that. We're currently working, currently completing that Porta Crossing facility, which is a great improvement over that yellow Sunset building that was there with this one in control. So anyhow, all that is, is fine. I think that the main character of our town has been and will continue to be for many years into the future, basically the same. Right? We're looking at, you know, we, you know, I got this, oh, I'll go ahead, excuse me. But we had a workshop on looking, you know, vision of the town and, and it was just a little passion, pass out. If you'll entertain me, I'll just read some of the things on it. A good vision is ambitious. It must not be commonplace. It must be truly extraordinary. The property gets back to the idea of vision that causes people and organizations to stretch. A good vision pushes the organization to higher standards of excellence, challenging its members in trying to achieve a level of performance they haven't achieved before. Inspiring, motivating, compelling visions are not about maintaining the status quo. It should be attractive, inspiring, motivating. People must want to be part of this vision. An attractive vision is more likely to be found than not. And, and it also emphasizes, you know, the economic growth for the town. That's something that's really good. And we've done some, a lot of things, I think in the past, you know, certainly that, you know, this e-jordan events that we had here in the winter time is great. And there's several other things that we're doing, you know, with the hockey rinks out there and, and the fishing contests and everything. We're, we're still, even though we, we've worked to make our shoulder and our winter seasons good economy for the town, the fact is that the basic economy of the town is, you know, some four, four and a half months. And that's the way it has been and that's the way it's going to be for a long time, even though we keep expanding it. Comment that James, Chairman James mentioned about one recent development on the lakefront as something that, in his opinion, he expressed that it was just too bold. And I think there's different opinions on something like that, that I think the main thing of why it failed was, oh, well, it exceeded some height, needed a height variance and, and some consideration for some open space. That being said, and even though you talked to Mayor Burquist about ordinances and everything like that, we do have ordinances, we have reviewed many times and we have, we have our municipal code and we've had several ordinances making certain modify, I think there's about 20 of them that are modifying our municipal code. The one thing I, I feel is the municipal code is the, something that's very important. We've all worked on that, but it is a guideline. It is something that it is a guideline and something that when appropriate, there can be, and that's why we do have a variance process to make some modifications for something that is really important for the town's future. And so personally, I felt that Leatherwood's project was, was very visionary, very attractive. And I think it would have been a great economic boost for the town. But anyhow, that's off the plate right now. So that being said, now I, I'll be glad.
Thank you, Heather.
Well, first I'd like to address the color white. Our code says that we should preserve the historic looking feel of our town and quite a few of the original buildings were white. So I don't know why we are saying we want the history, but then totally ignoring that one of the only paint colors available was white. So if it wasn't wood sided, it was white. Another thing is, I think that, you know, our code is a little bit too vague. And if we want to talk about preserving some of the history and making this unique charming town, we should look at Rocky Mountain rustic architecture, which was very popular here, also in Estes Park. And that is the barky siding and it's gabled roofs and it's very loggy looking. And that, that has a very clear definition. So when we're trying to shore up these definitions, make them less subjective, that might be something we really want to look at.
I like very much you're less subjective. I think we need to be a little more clear and concise with our verbiage.
And anything outside of that would just come before the board. I'd rather just keep it strict and if they want a variation outside of that, then you'll have to come forward.
One thing I'm on, I've been with you guys who design standards. When we had, over at, at the lodge up on top there, we did review the design standards. So they are very stringent, but very solid criteria for those houses that are built over there. I thought that was, but that was, I mean, you couldn't have that extensive of detail, you know, for the town. But that's something that would be overboard for what we.
Ending happy medium.
Yeah, I was on my follow-up with what Heather had to say. I think we need to definitely improve our design guidelines. They're too lax, they're now too subjective. If we want to keep what AI shows us, Grand Lake could be or should be, or what Grand Lake is, we definitely need to have very strict guidelines. I mean, Frisco, you mentioned, which is a good example of how they've been able to maintain their downtown, does have very strict guidelines developing in there. I like the idea of bringing more of the Rocky Mountain rustic back. But I also think, I have no problem with white either, because every building's were white. But there are also a lot of colors, you know. Bob Scott's buildings probably, what example? He put some very nice color in there and that just adds a lot of vibrancy to what overall is a very brown, green town. I think that's good. I think in the design guidelines, you have to consider view corridors. So right now, people drive down the downtown, or if you have to be on the north side of the boardwalk, you have a great view of Mount Baldy as you're walking through the downtown. You start going three stories all the way through the downtown and you don't lose that view. I think that's something that makes Grand, Grand Lake unique and should be preserved. I also think what is shown up on the screen is what Grand Lake is right now with a lot of 50 by 100 foot lots. And certainly we have some buildings that are combined together, but those just smaller buildings are looking for not one huge massive building. With a bunch of lots combined, it could still be one building, but it's got to be broke up such that it looks like individual, I think. And I know this won't be popular, but I would entertain a two-story maximum in the downtown. And that's how Frisco's been able to maintain their, their unique charm, their downtown. And then I think going with less glass, that's what we've seen. You know, we hear the term a lot and we're the first to say that in Winter Park, we use the term mountain modern a lot. But our downtown shouldn't be mountain modern, it should just be mountain. A bunch of glass doesn't help. That's very modern and not, I think people are coming looking for this.
I'd like to add to that a little bit, too, that the modern, I've heard a lot of people talk, and, and I think we've seen it, I remember coming up here as a kid on the right-hand side, just before the Safeway, up above the Safeway, those condos along the ridgeline. You know, that was, in our house, it was a monstrosity and unattractive. And now, as an adult, looking at that, it's out of date. And now, as an adult, looking at that, it's out of date. And so we, I think in Grand Lake, one of the things we continually hear, and I'm hearing it a little bit here, is going back to our roots. You know, that's the one thing people like to come and look at is our old buildings. We don't have a lot of the mountain modern. Um, we don't want a lot of glass, the metal and and things like that. And so I think that's. I think about that a lot um up here.
My turn?
Yeah.
What I enjoy is to watch people when they come here for the first time. I did it at the. Free Lightning Festival, at the Winter Festival, that the boardwalks get people's attention so quick. And the and some of the, you know, rustic buildings and it's, that's what we are. And then when the ski journey, when we all had to keep, put our cowboy hats on out, that went back to our roots. And that's, so I agree with John. More of the rustic architecture. I would support it too. I think that's. And the glass. Yeah, I'm not a big fan of glass, but. Looking at the project that we're gonna look at later, I I'd like to see Keith with the logs on the front. You know, people look at the Saint's Rush and they see the upstairs and the, and that's what Grand Lake is. And nobody else in in Grand County. Is like that. That's why we're we're unique. So that that's how I would look at it. More rustic, less glass. I don't want to go modern.
Modern features, nice washing machine. We gotta go a little modern.
Inside.
Inside.
If you put the washers on your porch.
No washers, no toilets. You're right. Um, thank you, everyone, for your comments and and being here. Um, I don't think I've really heard the word timeless quite yet, basically, but. No, yeah, timeless and trends and fads. That timeless we are, trends and fads are not what I envisioned in Grand Lake. And that comes down to building materials, shapes of buildings, shapes of roof lines. Um, there's trends and that kind of echoes what um Mayor Burke West said as comparing that. Ridgeline and Frasier there, that you could see the different types of buildings. And you could see, you know, immediately you have some mixed emotions about how that building looks and. As time goes on, that changes as well, whether you like it or you don't, but very common that. These trends fade out and there's a lot of building material, color. And style that we just kind of want to avoid. Um. It's why my place is made out of yellow log. I mean, we don't have to go back and. We do have to maintain it, but we don't have to pull it down and start with something new because it just doesn't fit. The current theme or the future theme there, so um. One thing that I personally like to see is. Is parking. Parking, especially as I sit here in the winter and I walk around and and our little winter economy is. You know, focused on cross-country skiing and snowmobiling and and ice fishing and. People bringing in their trailers and stuff like that. And um I snowmobile a lot on um Rutherford's Pass. And um I always assumed that the downtown steamboat and general steamboat area would be very. Uh welcoming to snowmobilers and it's not. It's not. You can almost find no lodging in town where you can bring a average to mid-sized trailer. And park and enjoy your activities. When people come here and have a bad experience with stuff like parking or finding a spot or. Getting a ticket because they parked in the wrong spot, that's going to affect their future visits here in Grand Lake. And that could also go down the grapevine there, so. I mean, I, when when I see parking garages and double stacked parking and stuff like that, that is. Trying to maximize space for. Where footage of of housing or or commercial space. But there needs to be some open air parking is something that I like to see. It creates. Open space naturally uh in a small way and. Overall, it's an issue that we talk about constantly, so um. That's huge. I'm kind of talking to folks um within the community. You know, they kind of get upset with how strict our code is. We kind of jump to uh what Commissioner Murray said, you know, with. Uh Tonahootu Ridge having these very to-the-T strict codes. You know, at what point do we stop being a municipality and turn into an HOA as well? So I I totally agree with this need for change, but there is frustr- frustration about amongst the community when it comes to. Uh doing remodels and stuff like that to where um. A lot of hoops to jump through for them. So uh we want to encourage development, make it easy. And that's one thing. We talked about the light. You'll see it, and I know a good example is the Rocky Mountain Repertory Theater um housing thing. But their windows are white and it's a pretty common thing now to see white, you know, fiberglass or whatever material windows. Um. And for many reasons, the reason you see that is because it's the entry-level pricing for a window and. For us to require, you know, over the top, you know, window colors to where you have this insane window package. People are starting to build out their, you know, custom home or business front. Talking about businesses, correct? Um, you know, it it kind of makes them decide whether they're. We hate the top, the word here, but return on investment worth their while, you know, so um. You know, I I talked about timeless. I want to look at, you know, when we're looking at future architecture, to look at buildings like. The Kaufman House, the Marina down at the lake, um. The Rapids, all this stuff that we basically described in this meeting as what. People desire here in Grand Lake for architecture and utilize that verbiage to. Help determine what's what's right. That's enough.
Thanks for stealing that one.
Yeah.
Uh, no, definitely reiterating on the timeless factor. Um, modern is modern for a time. Um, so anything that's sticking with this kind of timeless, what we have now, that's not going to be outdated. It's always going to be this, I don't want to call it rustic, because that it sounds old and like you're trying to make something look old, but it's. Something that stands the test of time and it does not go out of style or trend. Um. I hear both sides of the story of of wanting to keep our our rules and and code strict. To where we don't have issues where someone bends it just enough to where we have, you know, Pee-wee's Playhouse on Grand Ave. Um, but I've also had, you know, I'm part of an HOA right now and one of the big grumblings is everyone's put. Glass uh railings around their porches. And in my mind, I think that's hideous. That that would not fit the rustic style that we have in our community with our HOA, but they like them. And that's fine. Um, but um. I I would rather make it strict to where they have the freedom to do that without issues and then make. A better process for variances to where it's more streamlined if they want to adjust and change that to to fit their style. Still within ours. Um, right now, I think they have to jump through a bunch of hoops just to say, hey, can I paint my house or? Whereas uh I think you could just. Maybe streamline that process a little bit better, so it's not as much of a headache. We're not getting as much uh backlash because our code is strict. Um, yes, on the parking. Um, definitely need spaces for trailers. We are a snowmobiling town. Um, they do bring a ton of money to this area. Um, and if we don't have that industry, winter is is rough. Um, but I also see the side in in the summer and other times when people are just cramming it in there. So I think finding that balance um within our town properties to allow for both open-air trailer parking. Um, easy accessibility around town with that, um, and also having areas where people can cram a ton of cars in a small area. Um, so we can get more people in town with the space that we have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think the reason we're all here is because we're at a turning point. And I think Leatherwood put us there. And change is the only constant, and we have to decide. How we want to deal with change that's already here. Um. And what I learned through Leatherwood is that is not what the people wanted. There was nobody at the meeting that was in favor of that. And I think it's important that we listen to the people. And um I think that's what we're doing with this discussion. We're definitely at a turning point. I think some of the stuff we have seen is too bold. Um, I don't think strict guidelines are a bad thing. And I agree with the view corridor concept and. I must admit, I'm leaning towards the two-story. Um, thing as well. I'm not a fan of mountain modern. And I think some of the things we've done, especially this winter, we have. Provided more trailer parking. For snowmobiles, and I think that's um a good thing. And.
Are you talking about the end of town?
Yeah, across is across from the Conoco.
Yeah.
I mean, that was the start anyway. Um. Yeah, I I agree with a lot of the things that we're talking about, and we are here to um. To manage the change that's already here. And I I appreciate everybody's input and everybody that's here, and I think we're at a really important turning point.
Thank you, trustee trustees and commissioners. I appreciate that. I I've taken some notes a little bit and I. Kind of put together a little bit of what um. I've heard, I'd like to go through this just a little bit and have a couple of questions, and then maybe if. Suzie and Kirsten would like to say a couple of things and put it back to Steve for other questions. Essentially, a lot of what I heard was log, wood, bark, rustic, timeless, boardwalks. Uh, Rocky Mountain rustic, western log. The one thing I didn't hear that I'd like to add is Indian. We have to really remember that that is a piece of this too, and that doesn't mean we need to build a teepee. But it it does mean keeping that piece of this in in the history, the mining community, those types of things. That's.
Clear for Bob Scott.
I think that's um a lot of what I'm hearing is the historical and the original. Um, height does seem to be uh a piece that we're all in agreement on. We saw that with uh the Leatherwood project. I really liked Commissioner Shockey using the view quarter. I think that that's a very good verbiage, and it's it it's something that we all look forward to when we kind of peek. At the beginning of um town, but the Christmas tree in Baldy seems to be what we we look for. Glass. Um, you know, we all need it. It's in our windows. It's all over. I think with the glass, it becomes large. Glass, metal framing starts to give us that contemporary look that we're, I'm hearing we don't like. Is so the pane, the. Material around the glass, the color around the glass and the size, I think is what we're. What we're feeling. Um. The other piece, you know, is the strict guidelines, and I'm not sure. This side didn't really speak to a lot of those guidelines. Personally, I think guidelines are good. People like guidelines. Our dogs like fences. People like boundaries. Our kids want to know what they can and can't do. Think guidelines are important and sticking to them is also important. We do not want to be too bored that waiver a lot and go back and forth on what code says and then what we're doing.
Or have to argue the interpretation. Sorry.
Correct.
We've had to do that a lot.
We have had to do that a lot. I know the commission has had to do that a lot, so I I do lean a little bit more to strict and in doing so. We're also making sure that we're bringing in the right type of builders. We want people that are going to be able to afford these projects, that we're not going to have to worry about. Um, them not having the money to complete them, and if they know the guidelines going in. And some of them are, I mean, we all know wood. Kind of that bark timeless log look can be more expensive than a lot of other exterior facades that people would try and get away with. Two que- three questions that I have. Um. We we talked about color a little bit and just looking at some of the grand, I just Googled town of Grand Lake, Colorado. Uh, streetscapes and we do, we see pink on the ice cream shop. We see turquoise at Bob Scott's. We see red on the umbrellas in front of One Love. There is a lot of color. But the buildings themselves are those brown tones. So there's two in my mind, two components of color. Um, there's a big difference between Bob Scott's being all turquoise. Or turquoise accents. And that should be part of our conversation too as we go into this. Do we want a big turquoise building? You know, in the middle of Main Street, probably not, but. The character of the buildings with the accent colors gives the vitality and the vibrance of Grand Lake as well. That's more a comment than anything, but one of my questions, there is conversation in some of these new builds. And if these buildings have to be torn down for some reason, to keep the front of the facades the same, like. We talked about in in uh Frisco. If we only go two stories, I believe there could be the discussion of. If I have a flat roof with the flat facade, that western type of look, which there are some, I think you guys have a flat roof. And you can only go up two stories and you need space because somebody's going to build condos or apartments there. Are they going to want to put a deck or a porch on the roof? And how do we feel about that? Um, a lot of that conversation came about too from ski joring. You know, people kept thinking, oh, gosh, I got to get up on that roof. We actually saw people on roofs. Um, and so I think it's important to take a look at. What we want to see, if we have a bunch of, you know, buildings like that, maybe the building in the center in between the two tall ones. Can't tell if it's flat or angled, but let's say it's flat and they want to put porch up there. Are we okay? With umbrellas and people sitting on top of the buildings, something to think about. Um, and then the last one would be, um, and I'll. Direct this to um manager Kudron. Uh, also, the idea of open space. We see in a lot, just in downtowns in general, they may have open space on their building that is a porch or. I had to build a green roof on my building in Denver. Still bitter about that. Um. Yes, I can put cows and chickens on my building that's right on off of I seventy. Um, but. Do we need that open space aspect? In downtown Grand Lake proper? Is that more for the areas outside of town? Um, this is obviously, we've talked about open space with Leatherwood. It's come up in other. Situations with projects that, well, I'll get this open space here to to qualify for that there. Um. Maybe come, what, where, where also are these rules going to go? Are we going to do them? What, how far is our stretch? Does it start at the Chamber to Charlie's? Does it start? At the hub to Charlie's and is open space a a real factor? We have so much open space. Do we want to put, continue to put that out there for um the builders? So. Some of those things to ponder and. Manager Kujan, I'll kind of pass it to you, and then if we want Suzie and Kirsten to add what your thoughts are right now.
So. A couple of things are. Some would say that our color palette is extensive. Um, there's, there's probably eighty-five to ninety colors. They are very much in the brown and earthy green, but white is in there. Um, it kind of, it's ironically, they're mostly dark colors and that's in our code twelve. Some dash seven dash two. Right underneath there is. Right underneath there is chart one exterior color comparisons. There are three things that we have that I'd like to talk to individually. One of them is open space and the purpose and the reasoning behind that and why our code is set that way. The other, the other one being the idea of what does constitute open space. As I quit, a green roof doesn't count here. And there are specific reasons why it shouldn't and the board should discuss those and these are, these are actually two of the three items that the commission has discussed. So, so I would like to just kind of hone in on, on both of those a little bit. Suzie Mackey's joined us with Jimmy Peterson. Thanks for joining. Suzie is also part of the design advisory group. And Kirsten and Suzie are our two at-large representatives. Dennis Humphries will be representing the Grand Lake Area Historic Society. And Diane Butler will represent the Creative District and then the mayor and the mayor pro temp. And so that'll be in my manager's report, but I did want to mention since I'm not expecting all of you to stay, planning commissioners, trustees, you have to. You know, one of the, one of the interesting things that I, I think I've heard, and it's interesting because the white flashings on windows stick out here a lot. And it it just sticks out as the world from the nineties above, maybe. I don't know. But there's a big difference between ordering, you know, fifteen white and fifteen non-white windows. And as the mayor mentioned, we might have to look that that's part of the cost of building in Grand Lake. It is it is certainly something that listening on this side of the table as opposed to sitting on your side of the table is a shift. Because all of your considerations and arguments are valid. And a- as, as a group, I'll continue to say what I'm looking for is not specifics, but we do need to figure out, do we want to push our downtown to look like that? And as an extension, do we want our lakefront to look like that? The other picture actually has the lake on one side of that. Annapolis is probably one of those towns on the water that reflects something closely that it has a single road that, that fits that kind of look and feel. The question then becomes also, do you want the lakefront to look like that or not? Because this goes to that consideration of massing and what you may want to look at and part of the consideration that the planning commission has and that we'll talk about in the twenty twenty-two ordinance. It talks about Grand Avenue having the straight front facade, but that the use outside has more step backs to it. And that's kind of a part where we're giving mixed messages to development. Do we want the step back look? Do we want open courtyards in the front? Or do we not? And we're going to ask you as town to build a building that has exactly these features in it. So we're going to want guidance as well. And when we build that, everybody looking in town to build is going to say, we can do whatever they do. And this is why. So we'll keep that in mind and mayor, I would, I would love to hear the comments from both Kirsten and Suzie regarding the general view. They've both been here a little bit. Come on up and.
Come on up. You know how it goes. State your name, your address.
So just, I was just listening to what everybody was saying. I guess we'll start with open space because that's the one issue that I think the first thing you guys need to think about is how you're carving this out. What do you call it? The central district? Central business district was what was the ordinance laid out. And I think that ship has sailed a little bit in that we have now the boardwalk. We've already done some buildings that are already outside of what I just heard you guys all say. So how do you carve out the area you do want? Is it this stretch of grand? Is it this stretch of grand? Is it a lake? I think you have to start somewhere. And then that's your carve, sorry, that's your carve out. That's where all of these conversations about whether it's wood and types of windows and this, that and the other, that's where that falls into place. You can relax some of the rules for kind of what Michael was talking about. You know, like up in here with residential, relax maybe some of the other rules that we have for building and tighten these up. It doesn't have to be. I sort of get this sense sometimes, listening to you guys, that it's, it's, we're talking about all of it and I don't think we are. And I think that's where there's, we seem to keep getting in trouble and stepping on each other, on each other literally, but on the subject. And I, I get why it's confusing for a developer. If we're talking about two stories and he has to have all this open space, he can't build that. Nobody can build that. It's, it's actually not possible. But would it be possible if you want this, and this was literally just an example that came up. But if you want your boardwalk, if you want your building to come to the edge of the boardwalk, there's no open space in this picture. So if the, if you say, I just want from Ellsworth that direction, that concept and get rid of the open space, which allows, I'm using Leatherwood as, if that's what's top of mind for me. He gets his two stories on grand. He gets his two stories on lake. But it looks like this or whatever you decide this is. And that gives him more space, just not having the open space to build something that financially, he might be able to do. Might need a step back for the third story. But you guys might like a third story step back if it's done with whatever roof design you come up with and it's the right wood and it's the right windows. Commissioner Finch said to me one time, something about articulated windows. So instead of having these ginormous windows that are just, there's nothing to articulate them, makes it look like they're a little bit smaller and it fits a little bit better with what we're talking about. So that was, those are my comments on the, what I was thinking about in open space. So it's carve out.
Do you articulate a window, just to clarify?
You know, when you see a window that has all the little squares, you can do that. Now, they were doing it in I remember where I was, I was talking to the mayor of the day ago, was driving someplace and I saw them, they were articulated in black. And it looked really good. And it, it made the window look smaller just because it was more articulated. What did I say? I mean, you know, balconies, because one of the things when I spoke to Jim Pritter about this was, so I can't do balconies on the lake and, and maintain this rustic look. And like, why, why can't you? If you pull up, and if you AI any of this stuff and you pull up a balcony, a rustic balcony, it pulls up these beautiful roofs with the, kind of like what Sagebrush has. So it is possible. And it's possible to do this in wood. And I think the mayor is correct. If you say to somebody, this is what we expect, these are what our guidelines are, you can either afford it or you can't. And maybe we'll, you know, get some developers that can do that. I think that's kind of all I had on my list here. Because the rest of you kind of covered everything else.
Thank you.
Suzie Mackey, fifteen ninety West Portal. My major concern is just the development in itself. You know, it's just like, he hasn't sold anything down there.
We're just, we're talking about everything.
Oh, I know, but it's just like, you know, but it's just like the development, it's you know, if we can have a bowling alley back, I'd like to talk to him. It's promises made, promises kept, but promises broken. You know, I, I don't know. I, you know, I don't, I don't want any, any of this iron, this iron, iron balconies. That sort of stuff is just doesn't go in Grand Lake anymore. It just, I mean, at any time. You know, all this stuff, the, the, the original, I know the, the original design for the for the thing in, in, in the back there is, is just an initial, but you know, we've got to get that looking more like we are a rustic Western town. You know, I know people don't like rustic, but we are, there's nothing wrong with rustic. You know, rustic can mean also, it doesn't have to mean negative. It just means that you're not looking something like Winter Park or Breckenridge or Vale or Aspen. You know, we, you know, even this flat roof thing, it's just like, you really want flat roofs when we get three feet of snow?
Well, I think they're facades. They're gabled in the back.
Yeah, well, I hope, I hope they're gabled enough to, to get rid of that snow. You should have seen, I mean, I have a slant roof. You should see all the snow that, that I had to hire somebody to, I can't even get it, you know, in part of my driveway because that snow is so heavy. But it's just, I just want, you know, I want this town to remain rustic and and be careful about development because right now, people can't make it through here in the wintertime right now. How we, I don't know. We have to be careful what we're allowing and, you know, just let's do it slowly. Not do it quickly. Let's figure out, you know, what they've done in the past before we allow them to do it in the future. You know, it's, you know, that's, you know, history counts. And we all have a lot of history in this town. And it's just like, and we have to remember history. Or who knows what the hell is going to happen?
Thank you, Suzie.
One other thing I've, I've noticed, because all I've been doing as we're talking is sitting here and looking at the things that I do like and the, the developments and buildings that I don't like. And one thing that's been pretty consistent with all of these photos is there's not one large building on the property. You're not looking at one big building across. You're looking at, you know, multiple fifty-foot buildings all along the road that are not exactly the same, but have similarities and, and things that keep it cohesive. And I think like looking at these drawings here and, and Leatherwood. I, I think the point of it's the development, it's the development. It is a huge building amongst really small buildings that collectively all together make up the town. Now, if you're putting something super large amidst all that, it's going to look funny. It's going to draw attention away from it. It's going to detract away from it. So maybe part of what we need to put within our code for these future developments is to make sure regardless if this is a fifty-foot parcel or a four hundred foot parcel, that the breakup and the design and the different structures of that property in and of itself, not only should the style, but the sizing of the lots and the buildings on the properties. His first iteration that he, that he brought to us before, I thought was great. It looked like he just took old Grand Lake and just put a bigger, nicer building on the inside of it and on the outside of it. It looked just like a regular downtown Grand Lake mountain town. The new one is four or five lots put together of a really big, large complex that looks great by itself. But put in the middle of our town, it looks like someone dropped a giant. Out of something, out of the place. It's just, I, I, I think that could also be something because regardless if it follows exactly what our guidelines are, I think the variation in the buildings and how many we have is something that fits the small town style.
And you can still have one storefront within these multiple buildings. What looks like multiple buildings, you know. It's not a great example, but you walk into what seems like one building, but it still connects into the other side and it's a bigger space than what it seems like it is. It's exactly like.
They literally, they, they made a beautiful cohesive boardwalk with a lot of small buildings, but on the inside is a giant ride. Park and no one would know.
I think that's, that's a, gave me the visual that we were looking for, Julie. Thank you.
My name is Jim Peterson, fifteen ninety West Portal. For those of you who I don't know on the board up here, I spent sixteen years on the town board and four years as mayor. So I know where you're sitting and I know what you're going through. Originally, we used to sit over there. Now we sit over here since they built this nice podium. Spent many hours with this lady over here in this very room, discussing lots of stuff. I'd like to take us back to the library. When the library wanted to build their building, they brought in an architect. And the first plan was all steel and glass. And we, and we had taken the architect all around the town and showed them all the houses and the buildings and all this stuff. And he came back with this, this thing like Granby's library. And we said, what don't you understand about what our town is? We went back to the drawing board and he came back with a log building with all cement logs. And we said, no, that's not it. And we finally, after fighting and fighting and fighting, we get what we have now. I would, if you can't agree with me, I think that's a beautiful building. It's just like the town. It, it looks like the town. It does everything we wanted. And, you know, considering we had the library was back up here in this little building. An incredible, incredible source for our town. Now, I'm afraid, I mean, I don't see this, all this new construction looking anything like our town. Nothing like our town. I don't want to look like Winter. I don't want to look like Silverthorne. I don't want to look like Vale. I don't want to look like any of these places. We are unique. And if we make ourselves look like everything else, why do you want to come here? I mean, we're not unique anymore. So please, whatever we do, keep that uniqueness for our town. And I know that this big project down there, they're saying it'll take ten years. Can you imagine ten years torn up on that corner or the lakefront and all that? And plus, like I said, we, you know, we were promised a bowling alley. We didn't get a bowling alley. You know, and, and stuff we didn't get and things we didn't see that were promised, I'm afraid we'll get it the same. So please keep our town unique. Thank you.
My one comment, I would agree that the open space is not area of some that's all that necessary. You can walk a block to Lake Avenue. But that would say that I said, I, I'm not a big proponent of the open space requirement that we have.
Yeah, in the commercial district.
How does everybody else feel about that piece of this? Not that we're, we're not making any decisions. We're just discussing, but because that has been a point of contention, what, what are our thoughts? Negatives that you can imagine, positives?
It seems like on, on any developer's side of things, open space constructs as much square footage as they can build. And that's where we run into these conversations in this room is I can't achieve the square footage I want because of the open space requirements.
Well, and then you end up with some of the open space that we see between some of the buildings where it's just where the snow falls and the So yeah, I can, especially if you're going to look at restricting potentially heights or step, increasing step backs, then you kind of have to give on having more usable ground floor.
God forbid Sagebrush burned down or something. They'd have to build, that building would not. God forbid sagebrush burned down or something, they have to build, that building would not look.
That's the conversation is if that happens.
I, I think part of the problem here is that we're comparing residential space. That is now being built in commercial areas. You know, the commercial, we didn't normally have that much open space involvement at all. In the commercial space, but now we're doing residential in the commercial space. And now they don't want an eight hundred square foot million dollar condominium on the third floor. With, because there's no place to walk, there's no place to get out, there's no place to be in the mountains. In that facility, and that's what's ending up in our commercial zones. And I think that's where the, the open space question comes up. I don't agree that for commercial. Space, we need open space. But if we're doing the residential in the commercial space, then maybe we do need.
Let me clarify, Judy, just to make sure I understand, in the residential, we don't need the. You're saying that may not be necessary to have the open, but in the commercial, yes?
Maybe I might be able to clarify for, for the board. Who doesn't know that this question of open space is really talked about with mixed use. In a commercial, so much to Commissioner Burke's comment. It is not just a straight commercial building, it's a commercial building that also has residential use. So group one is that if seventy-five to eighty-nine percent is commercial. So that less than twenty-five percent is residential, there's only requirement for twenty percent open space. That goes up when it is fifty to seventy-five percent commercial, then it's twenty-five percent. Which means that is less than fifty percent residential. Now, when that jumps up. Is that if the residential is fifty to seventy-five percent, that's when you get into that thirty-five percent. And if the residential is seventy-five to ninety percent, and then it requires forty-five percent. The question is, does that fit our downtown considering what. Our open spaces are, and I think that that's the question that. Continues to be asked, and I'm not averse to saying that with the understanding, right? You do want, you know, if, if you're in your jammies and you have a million plus dollar condo. And a little dog, you probably want to be able to go walk somewhere in that property. Or not. Now, my decision, I'm staff. But what it, what's important is what. Those are requirements are, we also have to look at, and even taking a long term perspective. Over the last decades, I could say forty years. Selling a piece of commercial building property business in this town is a challenge because. As Commissioner Murray said, we're still a four, five month economy. As much as we hate to say it, events bring in a couple thousand people and that's wonderful. But we're still living on those four or five months and. Every mayor before you, Mayor Burquist, has wanted to fix it. And, and we've, we've thrown money at it and we've, we've. Thrown energy at trying to figure out this balance. And some of that is talking about how do we invest in our community? How do we invest in people? You know, who, why, the why is because we don't have a place to put workers. So there's not businesses taking a chance unless they're willing to work at it all the time. And the reality is. Is that there's not as many of those people coming up here as there used to be, the ones that want to work all the time. Ones that play all the time, we have plenty of those. So in order to make the commercial development work. People are wanting to put in those condos because to get the million dollars on that, where they only get three hundred thousand on the property on the ground level. And your job is convincing them to put in a fifteen year plan where. A lot of them only are thinking about five or ten, what, whatever that number is. So it doesn't answer the question, I'm just telling you the how we got here. And when we look at our town and, you know, maybe to miss Akandor's comment. Is that district that we currently have. Too big, too small? I mean, what, what are these changes and restrictions and how, how much do you want to tinker with three blocks?
I, I think it's an interesting question and it's one we should ponder with the open space is. When you mentioned walking your dog. That's just a piece of having to have a dog. Um, I, I take a little bit more of the, than don't get a dog. If, if you're worried about where you're gonna walk your dog and what you're gonna wear, you shouldn't have a dog. And not to say that that's not a reality, but the truth is, if you live, if you buy that million dollar condo. And you're lakefront looking at Grand Lake and, and in this environment. You're, you're gonna pay a price, it's gonna be smaller than what you want for that price. Um, but the, the payoff, if you can afford it, is to live here and, and do that and bring your dog or your dogs and. Put a hat on. Um, I don't want to base our. Decisions, you know, on kind of that minutia, not to. Say that that isn't correct, but it, it is something that a builder will think about. Um, but for us, that, that to me, to the commission and the council does not need to be part of. We're saying to the builder, we're gonna knock off the open space piece possibly, to a certain extent. It, it's something I think we could contemplate here. To. I'm, I'm forgetting what all of our titles are now. Wanted to call you mayor and, um, to Mayor Protem. What you were saying with the open space piece. That has become so controversial and I know the commission has seen it as well. Just thoughts.
I clearly agree with you, I don't feel sorry if you can't put your hat on and walk your dog down the street.
If we have, if we have. The dog park obviously comes into play in my mind with this, depending on where that would be and, and. Spaces like that, but we live in that environment.
It is. It's the other component of that argument is you are adding. Density into the downtown. So the part that we enjoy. That fills up during the daytime, that we get to walk on the boardwalk at nine AM and there's nobody around. Is because there aren't a hundred people with their dogs living in the downtown. So while, yes, they may still walk, so those open space requirements are designed. And they're here to, to accommodate that sense of open space. And that's an important piece, and whether the park is here or not, and the lake is there or not. We have to understand and. Part of the offset is that you're not letting anybody go up twenty stories. As, as well, I mean, the density will never grow to the point, I mean, he's. Over here at Leatherwood, he's wanting to put in twenty units. At our apartments, we're wanting to put in eighteen, nineteen units. So really, we're talking an extra hundred people. That's a lot, that's twenty-five percent of our population, but our town absorbs it every day in the summertime, a hundred like nothing.
Question. Is open space, does that, can. I wanna say this, if you build a deck on top of your two story building. And you have a puppy park up there and tables and chairs, is that considered open space?
Our current code says no. And our current code also says that balcony is not. And all of the code is private open space. There is no requirement of a commercial developer to provide public open space.
Except the code requires that the developer, um, when creating the private open space, it be visually open to the public. And, um, you know, in, in this discussion, I think people have choices. If you want to buy a condo in the downtown area, you have a choice, you understand that you're going to have to. Um, take your dog for a walk in one of the parks where there are choices. You could also buy a condo in Shadow Park West that has open space right across the street. Um, so we're trying to. Um, force people to do something based on what we think they might want. And when really, people want all kinds of different things, some people would rather have a larger. Um, condo than to have a place to walk their dog. And if we allow higher density in the downtown and take away some of that open space requirement. That would satisfy those people. And then we have private homes, we have other condos with a lot more open space if, if that's what they value.
Good point. And if you get it too dense, it's gonna go back to Mayor Protem's point about parking too. Like, I think you'll get a lot of people saying, I'm just gonna pull up here and park in Grand Avenue rather than drive down the alley and pull into the garage, so. You know, I think that would go through a lot of people's head if I'm just gonna be here for a while. That would be one of my concerns.
But those are two separate things though, right? We're not. Open space and parking.
No, I'm talking about the density by taking the open space.
Oh, because we can fit ten more people on this lot. It, yeah, I mean.
Parking lots are private open space.
Our private open space.
Is that saying that? Any developer, because they have the right to do whatever the heck they want, they could essentially say I'm making this.
Manager Steve, um, here, I'm looking at the not permitted, um, chart. And clearly driveways, parking and loading areas are in the not permitted to be counted as, um, open space. And that's on page two of five, five of the packet.
Thank you. Good. I had that one wrong. Thanks.
So really, does this become a matter of discussion for us? On the percentages that Manager Kudron was reading at the beginning of this discussion? Do we want to look at changing those percentages? To give the builder the square footage? I'm. Find what the minimal open space is. What, what are you guys thinking? Sorry, I put in my mouth at just the wrong time.
I think that's a reasonable compromise.
And maybe we should look at this square footage of open space for, um, for person who can live or. Rent that unit. So, um, you know, if, if you have several units that are just two people. What is that percentage versus if you have several three bedroom units that can house six to eight people, is that going to be different? Because right now it's just a square, um.
Just square footage.
That's called a can of worms.
Well, and maybe it's if they don't provide the open space, you give them the option to, they could choose to do the open space or they could pay for. No different than parking. And then that money can go to fixing up parks.
Like you're not convinced. That residential is the right thing if we're talking about right here, given the whole other conversation you just had about look and feel.
I tend to agree with you, I don't know that two stories of residential above commercial all the way through the downtown is the look that we're looking.
So you, so you guys have to back up then even further because you have to make that decision. Well, you first have to decide where, what is your, what area are you talking about look and feel? Where you're gonna carve that out and then you decide, do you want residential there? Because if you don't want residential there, then some of this is good.
When we have the, we have an area already carved out, um, the question is, I guess, is that appropriate or is that too far?
Well, that's the thing, you've already given some of it up. Right? Because you already get like the hub, that ward one here, it was part of that.
Certainly, I mean, every, every municipality has one of those, one or two buildings that maybe don't necessarily fit the character that you're.
That was, that was pre-math determination too, that was already getting. Badged and built before they.
I think it was kind of a result of that.
I think it was, Jim.
Well, in general, and, and, you know, in our identified commercial history. Uh, there's not a lot of, of vacant. Uh, there hasn't been, as I mentioned earlier, this, you know, uh, this town. Hasn't really changed much and isn't gonna change a lot, you know, in the commercial district. There's not much spaces of, where, you know, changes to happen. In fact, I think the only, uh, how many buildings have been, uh, in this district, uh, have been torn down and something else put up? I mean, no. No, the, uh, the Grand Lake Art Center. That big building over there, that is identified in the, uh, district, okay, they tore that thing down and they put up, uh. What initially, uh, this is Brad Hagram's, uh, uh, little units over there. That initially they were going for three hundred thousand dollars, now they're going for eight hundred thousand dollars. But anyhow, that's the only one that I think that I can recall that's been torn down. Uh, you know, certainly we did move the Eslex cottage, you know, over. On Lake Avenue and built the Repertoire Theater, which is just a. You know, a masterpiece there and it ties in very well with, uh, uh, with the boardwalk plaza. And, uh, I, I do get a kick out of the boardwalk plaza, you know, I. It got blamed for costing an extra forty thousand dollars because I wanted logs on those kiosks. Well, we got it anyhow, it, it looks good. At this town for, uh, future development and, uh, the pride of the town. And, you know, in fact, take a look at that one picture that you had, you know, with the. Uh, that one with, uh, the building with, with a lake over on the side, if you could pull that one up again. Um, yeah, that, this, the lakefront that we have over here is the jewel of the town. And that is something that, uh, you know, uh. What, what do we have right now? Well, we have, you know, of course, the, the classic, uh, the yacht club. Uh, and we have the, you know, the beachfront, which we maintained and then grew down there, the marina and then, uh. You know, the boardwalk and the fishing dock over there, uh, which is really great. Uh, we've talked for years about what, what we do, what we want to do in front of the Riviera. That, you know, that volleyball court, there's a lot of potential, uh, development opportunities that we could do there, that the town can do there. That would add to, um, you know, the uniqueness of the town here and, and also. Uh, make it more, uh, attractive for our, uh, paying visitors to the town. Um, you know, you, you, you look at, on the lakefront, going back over on the lakefront, uh, well, of course. Uh, uh, you know, you look at the, we have a nice. Uh, nice, you know, the rock place over there is a really great area and we've had, you know, the. troublesome concerts, uh, identified over there, that's just a really nice, uh, and, and along with, uh. Uh, yeah, see on this, on this picture over here, it doesn't have anything on the lakefront. We have a lot on the lakefront and a lot of it, you know, right of that road right there that is town property that. We have a lot on the lakefront and a lot of it, you know, right of that road right there, that is town property that can be improved. And do we want on the left side of Lake Avenue to look like that? Necessarily, but would, do we want more than, well, we can go get a hamburger or an ice cream over at Miyashi's, that's it on the lakefront right now. We, there's room, that's something that we did in the town and improve and make it, uh, you know, for the economic benefit of the town. Uh, you know, we had one big proposal that a lot of people didn't like, a lot of people did like it. Uh, but anyhow, one of the key things that was really unique about that was that it gave an opportunity from Grand Avenue to have a corridor in an open plaza going right down to the lakefront, which was really good. Hopefully, uh, that may still, uh, that plaza concept, uh, could go. But anyhow, uh, I just like to finish that the lakefront is has tremendous potential out of the town. And it's great as it is, but it could be much greater, I think.
Does anybody remember what the lakefront looked like thirty years ago? I mean, it was a rock pit. It was junk. It was horrible. I mean, that, that whole thing, the town did a lot of good stuff there. And it made it a very viable place for people to spend time with and to spend the Fourth of July down there. You know, we did that. Another thing I was very proud of was when we annexed the Grand Lake Lodge into the town. So that they could do the Tonahutu Ridge. We got a lot of infrastructure out of that, that sucker. We totally transformed, uh, Woodpecker Hill. Their fire districts, their fire lanes, all their stuff. Um, look at Triangle Park. I think it's gorgeous what they've been doing with that as, as the memorial park. I think the town has done a lot of stuff for open space. There isn't a lot of places to go for open space in our little town. I, I mean, I, I just think, you know, preserving the character again is what I, what I would like to, you know, pound on and say, we gotta keep it. Everybody comes to our town and says, this is unique, this is something different. As I say, but I'm just saying, I was very proud to be part of that development down there when I was on the board, so. That, that was a great, great, great improvement.
Keep our town unique.
So I just, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just pointed out to the mayor that if we wanna keep the character, your point's well taken. Do we want residential in that?
I, I don't think we can stop it, but alright, we got a town. You can't hide underwear in our town.
No.
Alright? You can't after say seven, seven thirty at night, you can't get what you want. You don't have, by then you're out of luck, you know? But those are things that people who live here have learned to adapt to, have learned that part of our life, that's stuff we, we do. Um, we don't have deliveries. I remember when my son went to college, that was the biggest thing, he says, they can deliver food here, how many times in the day? No, and, and that's not us. You give up a lot of stuff to live here. And do we wanna make the town so much like everywhere else? You know, it's not, it's not who we are, so.
As I'm saying, I don't know that residential's necessarily bad, it's just, it needs to fit the character. We have a lot of residential above commercial as it is now, with, what, what are the, what was traditionally the homes for the, for the commercial owners? It just has to fit, make it fit the, the rest of the building, so it doesn't appear like they're.
I agree with that, I think we're, we're forgetting the piece, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up with Sagebrush, um, not so much One Love right now, but Rocky's a little bit. They're housing their employees. And if we want to have employee housing here, then I think that's a piece of where this does need to stay residential. So looking at the percentages is probably more the answer than cutting it in or, or keeping it in or cutting it out. The facades, the front, the Walt Disney, I love that analogy. That is, is I think, you know, another piece of this. The, the color, the facade, what goes on behind the, the facade, what goes, um, on back there, roofs, snow storage, parking, you know, that's yet to be determined, but if we want to maintain that look that we're talking about, we all agree, we don't wanna be another town. We, I was, uh, went over to Estes Park Tuesday, um, for a meeting for town with the Park Service and walking through their town a little bit, they're closed, a lot like we are. They have a lot of stores that are open, a lot of restaurants that are closed, will be open in April, um, middle of May. But our town is still so much different than Estes. And we have something here we need to preserve. And I, I've, I've said for a long time when it came to Leatherwood, uh, a lot of you have heard this, that Leatherwood should look like, you know, the yacht club and Humphreys had a baby. Um, to kee- to keep up what we have down there, especially from what it looks like from the lake. Um, and so, one of the things, you know, any homeowners association, any town, it's, it's what it looks like. The, the aesthetics are critical. And I think that piece of this is, is, is crucial to really get back to that verbiage of bark and rustic and, um, the open space piece. I think that would be something we can direct planning to kind of, uh, look at different types of percentages with different types of square footage or people like we, we talk about with the rentals, heads on pillows type of perspective, what that looks like other different communities have. Colors, I think that, that needs to be addressed too, as far as our building colors versus our signage colors. You know, our trims and, and whatnot. Um, Manager Kudron, what else should we kind of?
I think specifically those were the items that we talked about at the planning commission. And we continue to, what I'm hearing is, A, we wanna continue to push the downtown to give it a sense of feel. And, and I think that you're all willing to look at what that sense of feel may ultimately look like. Um, and then secondarily, that you don't want the downtown, especially, uh, these, what, quarter, these few blocks that we talk about, that you don't want them to look or feel like condos. You don't want it to look like a condo mass. If, if there is a high percentage of residential, you don't want it to look and feel like residential, that's, that's where the sagebrush or up above Wild About Birds, some of those offsets don't make it as condo building with a couple storefronts in the bottom. You really want it to be a downtown building that is occupied by residences. Because the fact of the matter is, those one and a half million dollar properties, only a small percentage of those are likely to be full-time residents. A very small percentage of them, they're either gonna be empty or rented. One or the other, depending upon the type of million and a half dollar client.
Well, and certainly they can't be workforce housing. None of our workers can afford anything close to that.
And asking a developer to build that there is, is swinging the other side of the pendulum from even finding some middle ground. And that's why I'm, I'm gonna continue to throw out what affordable housing may look like in the downtown, and it's pretty boxy and you want it modulars, it starts that way. But it's got roof pitches and it's got multiple lines, and I think that when we look at white pictures, what we wanna remember is that what we're looking at, the roof line, we're looking at that look and feel. It's hard, cause it was so much easier when he put slab wood up. Except for the people that saw the glass through the slab wood. And there were a number of people that saw the community center right on the corner of Hancock and Park that was glass, fifteen feet each way. And suddenly all that slab bark disappeared to those people. They just saw that corner of glass and it took that unmodern, it made it the whole thing modern, which was fascinating. I, I like that design too. And I am hoping that as we get tighter, you're gonna be looking at those roof lines, right? What is that mountain feel? Not mountain modern, not mountain, you know, whatever, the other mountain, timeless, mount, mountain timeless.
Do you think heirs, since they're, we're using them still, right? Do you think they could provide us an example or two of good design guidelines that communities do have?
For sure.
I mean, cause I think that would help us, we can then start looking at it, at a planning level and, and yeah, this is, these are the areas we need to address and then we'll have to make it our own.
Right. I think that that's where that framework that I was hoping to get out of this conversation is to really, is to hear the essence of what it is we've been talking about. But we've been talking about it specifically instead of talking about the whole darn thing.
One second, Susie, I wanna address one, two things, that's exactly the goal. Um, I have been, as a trustee and mayor pro tem and now mayor, pushing for this type of conversation for quite a while. This has just been one of the things I've wanted for a long time. And I have looked at Frisco and other codes and that's, I think, a lot of what we're hoping to do, getting this verbiage from you guys. And let's start there and build what this looks like. So the employee housing part, one of the things that I don't think we give a lot of our businesses, um, enough credit for is there are, I mean, we can look in town, not all of the buildings are rented, some of them are owned and there is employee housing in there. And I do think that we need to keep in mind, some of these businesses, if these buildings come up for sale, there will be people to buy them. And it may be the business owners that do so. Um, I, I'm not speaking for Baxter Stran or i- in that situation, but a building like that would be a, a perfect example of someone who starts with a restaurant, builds over a period of time, that building goes up for sale, he's able to purchase and it does become employee housing. He may have to remodel, rebuild or whatever, but that is a piece that I think it's important to keep in mind, cause we've seen it happen before. Susie, please.
Well, and I think one thing you're gonna have to consider, being the realtor here, is that all those condos that are gonna be being selling for a million dollars across the street, you know, they're all gonna be short-term rentals. They're all gonna be BRVOs and I still, you know, I know, I understand it's a state thing, but I just don't think it's better to the hotel owners that they don't pay commercial taxes to be doing commercial in a residential zone. But I don't have any control over that, but it's just, you know, yeah, it's gonna be good, I mean, it's gonna be bring more, bring more people to the businesses, but how fair is it to everybody else? I just, you know, that's, I, I, that tears my brain off all the time.
Thank you, Susie.
That's another topic, um, short-term rentals, so, so, yeah. That is, uh, is something that we ought to take a look at, uh, what is our annual fee on these short-term rentals?
We just redid that and we added.
We didn't do it enough.
We almost doubled one of them.
But anyhow, we are running out of time and, uh, uh, there are, maybe we wanna talk about our space to create? Do we have that on the agenda?
Sure. Would you like to?
These are our first, these are the first charrettes of the idea of what they are looking to build and, um, as the design committee group starts, the advisory group starts framing down, this is an opportunity to speak to four of the six of them.
Wish they're marking, uh, right, hoping, uh, make it, uh, you know, not look so much like a Motel Six.
And that's, yeah, the white thing, but that's what brought up my comment, I couldn't figure out why I hated it so much, um. But I, I think the segmenting of the properties is something that can alleviate the Motel Six feel if, and making it to where it's separate designs, almost, let me pull up.
This is the backside.
This is the courtyard side.
That's a parking or odd area.
Parking, open space.
Correct, this is just, this.
This is just a box.
Yeah.
This is the box and a roof line.
I think it's pitched the opposite way.
This is on the alley view looking to the north.
Correct.
Where the parking will be.
Is those roofs help to offset that line, create a little bit more space off the roof?
Example of an articulated window, but when you look down, it looks so big, that really is big. But because it's articulated, you don't see it quite as big, that's what I think he was talking about.
Painted. Original rendition of the lakefront property and it's a facade of five different buildings. And I think that could be applied to these larger lots and the lakefront, rather than having something that's just one design style and one color that covers almost an entire block that really overpowers and overwhelms the rest of the town. If we break things up and make that part of our guidelines to where it's not such a big draw from everything else in the town.
Is that a quick comment? Um, I don't know how many of you are real familiar with Columbine Lake, but one house got built in Columbine Lake that sticks out like a sore thumb, it doesn't match anything in the entire area. And people were going, how did this get by the review committee? I mean, and I'm afraid some of this stuff I'm seeing is kind of the same. It, it's gonna stick out really badly. And everybody's, you know, it, it would look great in California, it would look great on the east coast. In the middle of Columbine Lake, it's just not it. So, I mean, I remember the first time I saw it, I went, what in the world is that? And people just said, how did it get by the committee? So, so I, you know, I, I just, I don't want what we're planning to stick out like that. That makes it look completely different from the general.
Well, this is, this is the great piece of this timing, we're, we're looking at, like I've said, property, buildings that have been purchased recently, leatherwood now, art space, space to create, you know, we're, we're space to create, we're looking at all of those things right now and we're here doing this. And so we have the ability with what we're coming up with today, you know, to, to move forward. Um, Ms. Carol, would you, or Sarah, would you please scroll up to the first picture? I have a question for all of us. Yeah, um, go down, next one, down one more, one more. This. This to me does a little bit, and you guys may all disagree, have somewhat of that western feel. If you can imagine the facades like Trusty Kiss so. Um, with those roof lines, the little porches, it still has some of that boardwalk look. What, not on this, not on this side, it does not. And to remember that the other side is more of the courtyard, it's the courtyard. It's the courtyard, it's not going to be.
Correct.
Correct. So in, in looking at this, does this bother you as much looking at it now? Versus the comments that were made when we were looking at it from the Motel Six parking lot perspective?
No, it looks, looks much better from this side here.
I mean, this, this would kind of offend me as long as it's, it's wood.
Correct, yes, don't. Imagine the facades that we, we were talking about in the previous pictures and the AI images.
The log supports and.
You know, log supports, the roof lines, the, the, you know, just wanting to kind of get a feel. They're two totally different, they look like two totally different buildings. But this is the side that the public will be, be looking at. Just wanted feedback.
Well, I think that.
No, it's a great project. Uh, and oh, the one question, there's a, I forgot their name, the company, but the Minnesota company, are they going to be managing it?
No.
No, who's going to manage it?
It hasn't been decided.
Hasn't been decided. And then, uh, the other thing is, uh, is the town, uh, have any uh, opportunities to vet the potential tenants in there?
It's part of the lease program that it'll be run through the town.
Okay.
It's known as lease up and it'll be probably a contracted item that is pre managed.
I was just trying to suggest the backside, the parking lot side, you could almost, it almost has that feel of the sagebrush. If you were to continue that roof over and you had a second story walkway versus it being an open walkway, you then maybe get more of that Western feel, less of the Motel Six.
I like that.
Is this a stick build project, just he was talking about?
No, this is modular.
Okay.
This is using modular, um, interiors from, there's a lot of variability, but it's based on, I, I think it was sixteen by twenty eight, whatever. Sixteen by thirty eight, whatever that standard size is from the boxes. Where it can be two, you can kind of, some of the interior ones, once the boxes are stitched together, you can bring down a wall and kind of make them like L's and that sort of thing to be able to change the, the different type of uses on the inside. We did have, um, a follow up conversation with um, Colorado Creative Industries a week and a half ago. So, uh, the live work creative space, um, the creative focus on lease up. Both of those are components that they do want to continue to see in the project. And three million dollars is granted by them. So we'll continue to put those features in. Uh, one of the things on this picture, the gap on the left hand side, that it's currently designed, it's, the design is like two buildings. And it solves two things. Number one is it makes it easier to put the, the upper structure in, but it also provides an egress for emergency access. And if you wrapped it around, you have to put other types of stairs and exits for emergencies. But the first building design was one building and this one is two with like a walkway.
I did have a question on both of them. It looked like, uh, nine units?
Yeah, eighteen total.
And then.
Two stories.
Then the other units are up on the top.
Second story.
So the total units is?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Oh yeah, double the, yeah.
Now, when I first heard about this project, I, um, I was under the impression it would be a live workspace, but only five of the units have a work area. And that constitutes less than eight percent of the main level that we would normally require be commercial.
Correct.
Um, is there anything in the lease that is going to require them to use those work areas as a work area or is that a second bedroom?
Some of the things that we have talked about is how to be able to manage that. And one of them could be through a secondary lease that would guarantee that those are commercial lease spaces. So you have one and one on the others.
Would it be possible to add a work area to all the lower level units so that it would come above at least eight percent of, um, the space we would normally require to be commercial?
It could. Um, one of the questions, and it kind of goes back to some of the sentiment that we've heard in the workshop today, how much of that commercial space is viable? Um, and I think that's one of the questions after the first meeting that I had with MA Studios was what could that look like? Do we want to build a building like this and have twenty percent of the ground floor unrented? Because nobody wants to rent a studio space for eight hundred or nine hundred dollars a month, whatever that three hundred square foot front space is, would we allow that? Um, one of the other, we didn't get to it in this conversation. In 2021, um, the board approved a special use permit that allowed for a change of use and not requiring the twenty five percent lower first fifty feet space. Um, that has since expired because our special use permits start out at only six months. So this is also, um, something that the board will be discussing is how to properly be able to utilize that space and what those requirements are going to look like. But I think those are good comments.
Well, right, because right now it just looks like an apartment complex instead of the live workspace. I assumed that people would be living upstairs, the bottom would be their studio. And so this looks very different from what I thought it would be.
Yeah, and I question some of those bedrooms, you know, like right on the boardwalk. So you're staking away from the commercial aspect of it and making it appear very much residential as you're walking by it.
Is our main purpose and goal with this project to facilitate more commercial space or to provide more residential space for employees?
Uh, the original was, uh, for artists to have a space to live and work and sell their arts.
And that doesn't exist in these half and half units?
I'm, I'm saying that only five of them have a workspace. So only twenty nine percent of all the units have that live workspace that we were sold on.
I thought the live workspace, because I remember there are a bunch of people that came and said, I'm an artist and I'm a writer or I'm an artist and I do graphic design or, and the concept was live work, meaning you live within Grand Lake, couldn't afford to live here. And so that's what this was, not necessarily that he would have studio space. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
The, some of the original plans showed every space had a dedicated creative space, even if that meant an alcove, uh, a place to put an easel, a place to put a little work table. So, uh, there, the original design did have every space had a set aside called a creative space. Whether it was a retail space or an inspiration space, they all did do that. Um, these designs don't have any studios, they're one and twos. So the, the space has increased. And I think that, um, if as the design advisory committee starts to come out, these are questions to make sure to ask because they'll be brought before the board for decision on what that impact is. I, I do know that Colorado Creative Interest has, has softened. They want to ensure the intent. They don't want it to look just like an apartment building. They do want it to look like that there will be both of those available, so.
And I, also, I think that we kind of, uh, we designed on the corner, right on the corner of Hancock and Park there, that one, the community room.
Correct.
That's an area where, you know, somebody has, you know, they can display, uh, even though they don't have a specific workspace, maybe they can display some of their stuff or, or have some literature of what they're doing over it.
Yep.
That would be a key thing for, uh, visitors to enter in that or get, you know, what's going on with the whole property.
Is there a way to get you monitor if anything is actually being created? I just, I mean, I can see people saying, oh, I'm an artist and I get this apartment and not really do anything. So how do you monitor that and keep, you know, you're not doing anything, so we're going to open this space up to someone else who's going to do it?
Right.
Is there a way whoever's managing it does that?
That, that was a part of the professional management and the way that, um, Art Space, when they were originally, the original, um, contract, um, awardee for the consulting work is they do have a methodology that they do that all across the country.
Okay, well, we're a little after six o'clock. I've got great notes, I think everybody did. I know manager Kudron is a little more prepared and, um, I just think we're all on the same page with having this move forward into, to planning and seeing what we can come up with and put before the planning commission as well. Um, anybody has anything you want to talk to me about? Please understand I'm wanting to be a very active mayor, um, so far. Um, and so, uh, the phone, the email is always open to you guys as well on the commission. So, um, thank you to everyone for coming. Thank you to you guys for your input and your history and thank you for your service, Mr. Peterson. Um, we'll take a break right now and we'll resume, um, let's do six ten, fifteen, six fifteen. Meetings adjourned, thank you guys. Twenty fourth, thank you to those, uh, of you in the audience. Thank you for being patient with us. Um, I'd like to call the regular meeting for the town of Grand Lake to order. If you would, please stand with me for the reading of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please go ahead and silence your phones at this time. Remember, we are recording any conversation you need to have. Please take it outside. The recordings will be available within the next twenty four to forty eight hours. Um, you'll notice all of our trustees are here, uh, except for trustee Arnston. I would take action on his absence, please.
I moved to choose trustee Arnston from tonight's regular meeting.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Ms. Weeks, please pull the board.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Shoner.
Hi.
So?
No conflicts.
This is my.
Mayor Pro Tem Soban.
Hi.
Mayor Burke.
Um, thank you. Um, where are we? We are on conflicts now. Will the clerk please pull the board as to any conflicts for this evening's meeting?
No conflicts.
No conflicts.
Trustee Miller.
No conflicts.
Mayor Pro Tem Soban.
None.
Mayor Burke.
And I have none. Time for our managers' report.
Thank you very much. First off, thank you all for participating in today's workshop. Um, that was really helpful to staff and I appreciate it. Code enforcement updates. We've been working on enforcing items within the town route, right of ways, as well as violations regarding permits in town, whether it is construction permits or other types of permits. Um, mostly things have been positive and we usually get compliance without having to take things any further. As the spring starts to come about, there was some discussion in the workshop regarding priorities and summer enforcement. As we kind of began to open up the door to our code, interpretation goes a lot of different ways. And as our code enforcement officer mentioned, um, if he wanted to, every trustee could get a ticket tomorrow. So I, um, and that's probably true with ninety five percent of our town. The only way that we're going to have an effective, effective enforcement season is if as trustees, you provide direction on what that looks like. As a result, we're going to take, um, we're going to bring you examples and kind of ask you the levels of what we'd like to see that being done. That'll be at the next workshop. We figured there was enough to talk about today. Um, spring conditions continue to change. Public works can go out and scrape the roads every day. And you can go drive out at ten o'clock this morning. And there's a nine inch gush of snow that looks like it just got dropped from a dump truck on Carnes Avenue. But that's what happens this time of year, we just have to scrape it back up. Um, give them room and make sure to give them a little shout out because sometimes it's kind of nasty work. I think their projects to the end of this week are making sure that all of the culverts are flushed out. Special times if anybody wants to come and help. Um, the marquee is moving along. I did meet with the marquee team about some of the engineering specifics. Um, we should be seeing welding coming up. We do have only two more sponsorships available, one bird at eight hundred dollars and a cougar at eight thousand dollars. Water department updates, um, since the last meeting, um, the well number two pump motor shredded. That's the one that's down on Hancock and Park. Um, it was likely due to time. Um, we were able to pull it out. There were no, we didn't have to flush it out, it was a good clean repair. There was also a vehicle that happened to make a tight right turn at the corner of Ellsworth and, um, Rand. And the fire hydrant was found the next morning lying on the side. Fortunately for us, it's not like in the movies that there's a valve and ours happens to be eight feet down because it needs to be below the freeze line that I learned from our water department. So for us, when you knock them over, we don't get like a gush and all that fun stuff that's in the movies. Asian Associates is in the community house currently doing the financial audit. I'll continue to needle Mayor Burquist about what she wants to talk about on the retreat and when she wants that to be. Space to Create Design Advisory Committee Group, the DAG. Um, as I remember, as I mentioned, Mayor Burquist, Mayor Pro Tem Soban, Diane Butler with the Creative District, Dennis Humphries representing the Grand Lake Area Historical Society and Susie Mackey and Kirsten Heckendorf as at large representatives. Winter event season comes to a close. It seems like we've been doing something every weekend and there will be less going on for the next couple of weekends. Um, I think everybody will be happy to breathe, but I guarantee you that there will be people coming up to get out of Denver every single Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Upcoming events, March twenty third, the Grand Lake Library, that was just this last week. I hope you got to see Alice in Wonderland with the Colorado Ballet. It was a live stream. On April eighth, Happenings at the House with the Grand Lake Area Historic Society. Um, Dave Lydley will be talking about the Harbison sisters and their homesteading and success running a dairy farm out at Harbison Meadow. Plan to attend May seventeenth, twenty twenty five town cleanup. Um, just plan to be there. Anything else for me, questions, comments?
Have you given the builder on the marquee any deadlines?
Memorial Day.
I would love that.
Any interest in the trustee opening?
None that I've heard of.
Okay.
And that's open through?
Uh, Madam Mayor.
When we do the meetings.
I'll probably ask to skip that meeting. Depending upon the workload, we'll be able to discuss if you'd like to hold the meeting on Tuesday. In the past, we've done both.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Anything else?
Yeah, for the, we volunteered for events and things.
Yeah, for the, we volunteered for events and things.
Yep.
Did we document that?
We did.
And you're just gonna send us?
We did document that. My apologies. I was out of town unexpectedly for a week. And that's one of the things that got missed.
They knew.
They know.
We have our staff meeting Wednesday, so we're going to put together my list of staff so we see back the way we're looking at it.
Okay. We'll move on to public comments at this time. Excuse me, this time is for unscheduled comments. This time is reserved for members of the public to make a presentation to the board or any items or issues that are not on the scheduled agenda. The board will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the board make any decisions on the items presented at this time. Rather, the board will refer these items to staff for follow-up. If a member wishes to make comments regarding times up, items up for decision by the Board of Trustees on the agenda, time will be allocated at the beginning of each non-quasi judicial item. For items of a quasi judicial nature, time will be allocated during the public hearing conducted for that time. If you will, please notice the clock above. Please be mindful of the three minutes of time given to each individual for comments. We appreciate your consideration. There anyone that would like to come up and speak? The board. I am not hearing anyone, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Yes. Oh. Mr. Krab.
Sure. Yeah. Can you guys hear me at all?
Thought you're on mute. Um, one second, please. Okay, we're ready for you.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, um, I just wanted to add one item to the town manager's report uh that we talked about this this afternoon as far as my attendance at your board meetings. I don't know if you wanted to bring that up now or if we want to talk about it uh later, but I'll leave that up to the town manager.
That is fine to to bring it up now. I did have a discussion with Mr. Krab today. As all of you know, that prior to my holding any type of the manager's role, we oftentimes had Mr. Krab here as a backup, just in case we needed him. Um, he specifically has been here since the dual roles and since you've been appointed mayor. The question to the board, would you like him to continue to A, be present? Or our meetings moving forward, B, be available during our meetings moving forward, which means that he might not be on, but he'd be available for a call during our meetings or on an as-needed basis. That accurate, Scott?
Yeah, that's fine. And it really is a policy decision for the board. Uh, I'm more than happy to set aside my evenings on Grand Lakes meeting nights because I've always got stuff I can do here in the office. So um, I wouldn't charge you guys unless you called me and and then just for the time that you called me. Uh, I would read the packets ahead of the meeting anyway, just to make sure that I don't see anything that I have comments on. But um, it's really up to you. Um, if you want me to attend, I'll continue to do that. If you want me to be on call, um, I'd be glad to do that. Or if you just uh don't want me to do either of those and you just let me know if you want me for a particular meeting, that's fine too.
Thank you, Mr. Krab. Trustees, any comments when you're?
On-call seems to be uh appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, as we've heard with other folks speeding, speaking at the podium, we do stuff a little different here. We're a little bit lax and stuff like that, I believe, when it comes to some of the stuff. So based on the agenda, making a decision on this is going to get hairy or questionable, then we make a comment to uh either the manager or the mayor and say this would be a good one. Otherwise, I think an on-call.
Yeah, I agree with on-call. Has there ever been an instance where looking at the agenda, you did not think that you would be needed and then all of a sudden we go on a tangent and we're calling Scott?
Yeah.
A tangent, yes.
I think that'll be a good opportunity for us to look ahead to to agenda items. And if we feel that there's something of a legal nature at that time, um, reaching out to decide whether or not we want your presence. But uh, I think on-call is is good for right now.
All right. And uh, that seems to be a consensus unless somebody else has a thought otherwise, I will hop hop off and I'll be available if you guys need me.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is where the board considers tasks that are of a regular nature and for record-keeping purposes. If a board member wishes to consider any of these items individually, that is appropriate to do so. We'll entertain some action or let's discuss the agenda.
I got it.
Yeah.
We did. Would you like me to forward it to you?
Yes, sir.
I think it came from Sarah.
There must be on my untrusting.
Is there any reason there's a a line item of sixty cents worth of gas?
We were testing it with code enforcement.
It worked.
I don't have a good answer for it.
Probably a chance or something.
Armelun.
It's our inventory though.
He's our melon. While the accounts payable is being reviewed, um, Mayor Burquist, I would like to say the discussion item of the financial reports. Um, I have received the financial reports through the fiscal year twenty through February. Um, unfortunately, it's still in raw Casell format and I have not become good enough at Casell to be able to answer questions as they relate to that. I will forward all of you a copy of that report. And if you have questions for me, please reach out to me and I'll make sure that I get from Nicole Kirkpatrick that information.
Thank you. Trustee Casso. Other than, do you have anything other than the?
Other than the sixty cents.
What does the one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars get us? To what point, Steve?
Um, that is the deposit. We continue to be billed. That's twenty-five percent. And the purpose of that is necessary dollars to be able to engage the engineers. So I got a bill.
Got five some money in front of them before they start working.
I got a bill.
Yeah, thank you.
For in addition to that already.
Okay. I move to approve accounts payable dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please pull the board.
Trustee Casso.
Hi.
Trustee Shoner.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Soban.
Hi.
Mayor Burke.
Hi, thank you. The consent agenda passes on to um our items for discussion this evening. Our first item for discussion. Uh, where did that go? Is I got the wrong page, actually. Uh, our financial reports. Just did so quasi judicial special event liquor permit. Uh, Ms. Carol.
Um, I received a special event liquor license application from Kevin's Outreach for Local Emergencies for their special event for their chili cook-off. This is the second year that this organization has taken over this event and they are looking at um uh, sorry, they are looking to request the hundred dollar fee to be waived as they are a nonprofit and we did waive it last year. Um, I put on there the qualifications for the permit per our code and what to consider. Um, and to date, we have not rate or waived any fees according to this outreach. Guys have any questions? I do have Lyman on the line. He wants to say anything. Right there. Yep, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Do you want my video?
Uh, it's totally up to you. If you want to show us your face, it's up to you.
Uh, it doesn't matter to me. Um, we we've done this event up there for several years now. Um, a couple of years, we had to drop out and do it all by ourselves and we, which we did. But then last year, we were able to hook back up with the fire department and Mindy and keep this thing going locally uh with local support and everything. So we we just want to keep it going again.
Thank you. Trustees, do you have any questions for Ms. Carol or Mr. Wilkinson?
No questions.
Well, I would entertain action on this, please.
I move to approve special event liquor permit application and resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, a resolution setting certain fees for a special event liquor permit for Kevin's Outreach for Local Emergencies Special Event Chili Cook-Off.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please pull the board.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Shoner.
Hi.
Trustee Casso.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Soban.
Hi.
Mayor Burke.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. This is a great event. We love what you're doing for the community and it's passed and we'll see you soon. Moving on to the next item, um, consideration to approve a new special event application for Yarmini Music LLC. Who do we?
I will be doing that one. Um, so background is Yarmini is a music festival that has taken place in several different locations throughout Colorado, owning its roots and name to Yarmini Ranch where the first festival took place in two thousand and six. Attendees called Yarmineers gathered to experience some of the best music around in rock, funk, soul, folk, jam, and grass, which gave the festival its original name, Yarmini Grass, sent shortened to better reflect the musical diversity of the Colorado Festival. Yarmini is the music, the space, the feeling, but most importantly, the people. When reviewing the application, the Board of Trustees is to consider uh the municipal code eleven dash six dash three. And then we have Andrew here. I'm going to unmute him.
And you also have Evan, Sarah. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hello.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. We are extremely excited to be bringing this thing to you guys. We've spent the last ten or so years up on up on the upper Colorado and the opportunity to bring it to Grand Lake was was brought a couple of months ago to us and this is a a much better home for us. And we got the opportunity to kind of tour the town with tour the town with a couple of folks up there and got to meet with Steve and Sarah and been working pretty hard to try and make this thing something that you guys will be excited to have in town.
Thank you. We're looking at the maps and whatnot at the moment. Um, trustees, do you have questions? I'm sure that we've got some for this event, the first time that it's coming to town. I have had the opportunity to meet with some of um the gentlemen doing this project and there's a lot of excitement and creativity uh behind it. As you look through this, what questions do you have for them or Ms. Weeks?
Um, I would just like to let you guys know that there is a special use permit that will be outlining areas of camping and additional um parking space being used. Um, so we'll present that at a later time and have code also come for that. So we just got that. We have the application. Um, Brian, code enforcer, looked over and got it back to me right before leaving Friday. So we'll bring that before you all on the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything? We're not hearing anything. Well, that's always a good sign.
Can you guys tell me about the Yarmineers and what kind of crowd we're expecting with this type of event coming in?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a it's it's a fun crowd. It's it's definitely got its roots in the bluegrass scene that has kind of been the 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 underpinning of the festival for a long time, but it is it is it was held at Rancho Del Rio up on the upper Colorado for Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, eleven of the sixteen years that this thing has run. So it is it is definitely a lot of raft people, a lot of water people. It is kind of themed around water. That has been the the kind of underpinning of the festival forever. So we were kind of ma- made our name by having a floating stage that literally was two rafts, two whitewater rafts moving down through the upper Colorado rapids back into Rancho Del Rio and kind of a floating festival event. Uh, as the as the years progressed, it kind of iterated to the stage being set up on the on the side of the river and there was a very awesome Eddie on the at Rancho Del Rio that allowed people to just sit in the river and pass back and forth in front of a stage and to kind of, as you're looking at the as as you're looking at the map, you can see that we've kind of designed the space around the town beach to allow us to be able to have music that both both faces the water and music that is actually over the water at your at your town dock. So during the day, kind of a focus on a free access event for anybody who's coming into town and wants to go and occupy the park and then mid to late afternoon, our our plan is to kind of convert it over to the ticketed event that will take place predominantly on the main stage facing out towards the lake. And it's a it is a what what used to be a rowdy crowd as a result of COVID turned into the most family-oriented event I've been a part of in twenty years of doing this. The uh, the I I will say our our EMS services did not charge us during the event last year because they had one sprained ankle and they got the best view of the stage in the crowd. So they chose to not actually charge us for anything. We uh, I think we had about maybe twenty to twenty-five percent under five-year-olds at this event last year. It is a it is a very, very family-oriented event. So as you'll see in the town in the town map, we we want to bring as many families as close to the park as possible and bring uh an opportunity to get on the river or get on the water. And now we are, as you can see, we are going to modify the name of this festival from Yarmini because it originally started on Andrew's family's ranch that was called the Yarmini Ranch. The brand became the marketing for the uh for the festival itself. And then when we moved to Rancho Del Rio, we were literally in the shadow of Yarmini Mountain. So that is kind of the the origin story of the of the name and the the community that we built around this. And in speaking with Steve and the other people in, in the city or in town, we've decided that, uh, Headwaters makes a lot more sense for, for this where, where it is going to live now. So that's why we're switching the name up a little bit and taking it away from the, from the floating bluegrass festival that it once was to a, a little bit more, little bit more land-based and definitely, uh, proud of the fact that we are getting an opportunity to throw this event at the, the headwaters of all of our favorite rivers. So.
Can you tell us about how many people you're expecting that will come for this event?
Uh, this festival will be a success at somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand people. We're anticipating making it available to an upwards of around three thousand. We came to that number as a result of kind of speaking with the, some of the festival event promoters that have, have tossed other festivals up in Grand Lake and kind of the event you guys had last year. Uh, Sarah, please remind me of the name of the two festivals you guys had up there.
Um, we had the Trampled by Turtles and then the Troublesome Fest.
Yep. Yeah. So I believe the, the Trampled by Turtles event was held in the parking lot up there. So if you're looking at the, looking at the special event perimeter map, you can see that we're not actually attempting to throw a, throw a festival in the mountains on top of a blacktop parking lot. We have kind of figured out a way to orient our stage so that it takes advantage of the terrace park and points out towards the water. I know troublesome was kind of pointed the other direction. So this event is kind of based around the idea of having the best view of the water as possible. So we are expecting that that space based on previous experience and kind of analyzing the space around there. That's a comfortable space for around two thousand to twenty-five hundred people. We have enough space to fit as many as four thousand, but that is not the, not the target for this year. I think if we are, if we're incredibly successful and we sell twenty-five hundred tickets for Saturday, we're going to be very happy with it.
What were ticket sales like last year at Del Rancho Rio?
Rancho Del Rio has a cap right now. So one of the main reasons why we're leaving Eagle County is because of the, the river egress in camping restrictions that were historically not enforced in Eagle County became much more enforced during COVID. And as a result of that, we lost our twelve hundred person capacity and fell down to around eighteen hundred people. So this festival has been anywhere from seven hundred people on the smallest years up to around twenty-five hundred to three thousand on its biggest years. Rancho is no longer cap capable of really handling that capacity because of the, uh, buffer zone to the river's edge. So we had to remove seventy-five feet from the river of any infrastructure at all. And that unfortunately eliminated the entire backstage area and a significant percentage of the camping on that property. So where we had hoped to grow with Rancho, it became regulatorily impossible. So we went out searching and.
So you were selling out twelve hundred and then you had to decrease that down to eight hundred and we're selling out at eight hundred?
Yep. And the infrastructure of Rancho is pretty much nonexistent. So being able to have the, the, the capacities of an already built town, we were, we were literally showing up and setting up everything from every generator that powered every, anything there to every porta potty and all the internet. And there was no infrastructure for parking whatsoever. So it's a, it's a logistically more complicated situation than being able to come into a town that is comfortable seeing five thousand visitors in a day without, without worrying too much. So.
One of the new aspects, uh, for your event for us is the car camping and ball field camping. You're camping in residential areas. Um, is, is the crowd going to be respectful of those residential areas that at night?
Absolutely, yeah.
I like the idea. I like the concept of all the children, though.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reality is that this is a, it wasn't designed to be a, a family event twenty years ago, but that is definitely what it has become. And it is, it is historically a, a fun crowd, but an incredibly respectful crowd. I, I think I would, I would point to the fact that we had no police incidents and practically no medical incidents last year. Everybody had a great time. We are, we are capable and very willing to comply with whatever timeline restrictions and kind of noise restrictions you guys have in mind. We, we have considered making one of those camp, camping areas, a family specific camping area with a very early, like before the music ends curfew, but we are certainly willing to do whatever we have to. One thing to note about this kind of festival is that we don't, amplified music is extremely taboo among this community of people. So where a lot of music festivals, you will have a lot of JBL speakers blasting late into the evening. This will be people with acoustic instruments walking around and doing small pics around, around a campsite. And it is, it is much, much quieter. I, I think if anybody's ever gotten the opportunity to see any of the Planet Bluegrass events in Lyons or in Telluride, it's a kind of modeled around that same kind of campground experience where everybody's, everybody's enjoying themselves, but it is no drums allowed, no amplified music allowed. We, we take that very seriously because a lot of our best musicians are, are string pickers that can't handle competing with a, with a DJ next door. So that is very explicitly forbidden inside of our campgrounds.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hey Evan, this is Sarah. One thing I wanted to, um, I guess just talk about is on the application, you all stated that the concert itself would be going till eleven PM and our, um, noise ordinance is at ten PM. So is that a hard time?
No, that's not a, that is not a hard time. That is not a hard time set for us. Kind of the, that eleven o'clock number is more around the idea of having, making, making sure that everybody's cleared out of the park area by that time. I think if, if ten o'clock is the end of amplified music there, we are very comfortable with making that the end of our, end of our sets. Our, our hope is that we can, we can come to partnerships with any of the bars and Charlies and, uh, was the Lariat and one other that we were considering attempting to have evening events at. So indoor, indoor shows that will happen as kind of putting air quotes around the late night events that would happen after the festival. So making all of the, uh, the, the night owls go inside is, is definitely the target of this. So we want to make sure that we've got a, a good relationship with any of the bars that are interested in actually hosting music that can go a little bit later inside.
Hey, thank you. Well, board, do you have any more questions for Evan or his partners?
Yeah, I have one question here, guys. Thank you for considering us here in Grand Lake, obviously as an option. Um, I do see here that, um, the on the water stage will be going during the day and then the beach will be closing down after that before the main stage opens. Is that correct?
The beach will be closing down to public access. So it'll essentially become a ticketed event. The alcohol perimeter will remain the same from noon until ten o'clock and that alcohol perimeter will be open access. If you notice, essentially in front of the main stage, there is a, there's a hard, hard block line that basically cuts off the area that will not be accessible to the public during the day. So our, our thought is that we want to be able to make sure that music is available to anybody who wants to see it from noon till between three and four. And then after four o'clock, the beach area will be closing down to wristband holding ticketed event participants. And sometime between four and five, we'll clear the beach of anybody who doesn't have a ticket and then music will start again on the main stage at five. The beach will remain open, but the water sets will end essentially right around then. We, we are flexible with our scheduling of that. That is, that is something we understand needs to be carefully considered, but the, the real goal is that during the peak of the day, we've got an open beach and anybody who wants to come can come and check out the music and hang out and around four o'clock, we anticipate being able to shut down the, shut down the free access to the beach area and create a ticketed event space along the, or in the area of the beach and the town park right there.
Then you guys love staff to do the clearing of the beach and do you have kind of?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Plan for?
Yeah, we've been working with, we've been working with two different security companies for pretty much the life of this festival and they are very competent at pulling that off and kind of politely explaining when people are entering the alcohol restricted space that after five o'clock, this is exclusively a ticketed event. And we will make mobile ticket vendors available to everybody and local tickets were a conversation we had, but obviously we want to talk to you guys about how we would, how we would regulate that, but there is definitely an intent of making it a incredibly welcoming and far more affordable than if you're coming up from the front range for anybody who's a Grand Lake resident or Grant County resident in particular.
It, it, will security be included at any of these campsites or is that strictly just?
Absolutely. Security will be, security will be onsite with between fifty and a hundred people per security guard twenty-four hours a day during the day and during the time that people are going in and out, there will be volunteers that are handling any car movements and making sure that people are directed in the right direction and have access to the, the porta potties and portable showers we'll be bringing in. But yes, there will be onsite security at every campground all night long.
Miley, it, it feels weird in the busiest time of the year, in the busiest spot in town to put an event.
We've done it for several years.
Do I?
Yeah, but. It, it, it just, it, it, it feels off.
Trampled by Turtles was July thirteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. And that worked?
That was, I mean, that was a national act that sold out Red Rocks. This is hoping for two thousand people. Is there, I love music festivals. I want to do more of them in town, but it feels like we're putting it in an area that's already at.
It seems like the people that are already here would enjoy this.
Unless they came for the lake, to the beach.
They're going to have the beach most of the day. We're looking at four o'clock on and typically at that time, the beach.
Is pretty quiet.
Wait, so the, the beach is open all day long to the public and then it shuts down at what time?
Three.
Three to four o'clock. Security perimeter after four.
And no parking, parking all day long, breaking ground.
Not July. Not July.
Schools that have parking back there.
Concerned about the camping aspect.
Have this all been cleared with them?
That'll come in your use, that'll come with the use permit, the next meeting. For as far as the camping and stuff like that, especially.
Yeah, to, to approve the use of that property, but they've already got approval from the people who own it to do this.
Yeah, yes, yes.
So the camping area ballpark?
And, um, parents' gardens.
Where the ski touring horses and trailers were a couple of weekends ago, that will be where these cars will be parked for the camping there.
Which is owned by the Presbyterian Church.
Oh, okay.
So in the process, do residents within two hundred feet of the ball field or the metal get a notice? What's going to be our?
Have a proxy, special use permit is a whole new thing for us and that's Brian's end of things. So he's doing all that stuff, all his research.
Would you like those as a setup? I don't know if that's a good idea.
I think it's a great, I mean, we, we already don't allow camping in town. So to pick these two spots, three spots and say, yep, this is it.
This also, I mean, this is probably the time of year also, not to change subjects completely, but we're talking about camping and we have the, the CDT trucks. For campers.
Right.
Yeah.
That's prime CDT time for us.
Those areas at the CDT sites are, are not part of.
They're separate.
Yeah, we put them behind the center last year. We talked about moving them elsewhere. We had more time for planning and potentially putting them over on the forest property across Rainbow.
We have made arrangements and we're finalizing the contract to include that, which will give us twenty plus.
That being the forest.
Correct. Excellent. Across from Hilltop.
So we're already.
Are, are these camping spots ticketed? How was the process for patrons?
Yep, hundred percent ticketed. They must be festival ticket holders in order to be allowed to camp in these lots.
I, I don't know if you answered this already. Are they allowed to leave the festival grounds and come back or once they're in, they're in?
We are definitely in favor of allowing people to leave and come back in. I think the, the issue you guys ran into with the AEG event last year related to the kind of duration of the event. It was an evening only event and they made sure that all festival goers were in and then permanently in. And in speaking with some friends over at AEG determined that they ran out of beer, they ran out of food and we do not want to create a scenario where people cannot go up into town at three o'clock in the afternoon or five o'clock in the afternoon and go eat dinner in town and then come back to the festival. I think that is critical. We do, we do intend to have as many local businesses and restaurants that want to participate in essentially a, a food village inside of the vending area as possible, but we will do the math and make sure that we have enough food to feed everybody if they want it. We will add, add, uh, food trucks as necessary just to make sure that we have everything covered inside. But no, I, I do not anticipate any situation where we would be preventing reentry because I think that, that's, that's a hurt to, that's a hurt to all the businesses surrounding there that we don't, we don't need everybody hanging out by the river or hanging out by the lake and spending their entire day in there. I think if we're starting music at noon and playing music until ten o'clock, it would be unreasonable to ask people to stay in for ten hours.
Is that, uh, you mentioned this being the home of this event in the future, um, being an annual event. Are you tied to the weekend after Independence Day or middle of July, or could this be something that would also be just as, uh, successful in August?
So historically, this festival was always held on the peak weekend of the perceived meteor shower, which is almost always the second weekend in August. We, we pursued that originally when we were planning this a couple of months ago and it became clear that the other events in Colorado and the kind of restrictions on the events that you guys had in Grand Lake were leading us to this weekend in July. And in speaking with some of your town officials, it became clear that that weekend in July was when Trampled by Turtles was there and they were able to have a successful weekend and it doesn't have, doesn't have much conflict with any other events you've got going on. So for us, that seemed like a, a good compromise. We are, we are flexible with our weekend, but obviously it's, it's a, uh, it's a packed schedule for music festivals in Colorado. So solidifying a weekend is definitely our target. If that is the weekend that is going to work best for both parties, that is the weekend we would like to lock into for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, if we can do it.
Has anybody talked to the jurisdictions that really had their own festival before, considering issues?
I'm familiar with it to a certain extent. I have friends from Eagle County that have gone over there before and, and it seems to be very family oriented compared to what it used to be. And, um.
Just got a grateful dad concert in my head.
No, I don't see that, see that at all. From what I understand.
Yeah, I mean, just like last year with the Folk Festival and as iterated by the applicant, very little drums, bass, any of that stuff. This isn't traveling music, you know, all the way across town.
Or online.
Oh, we would, we would love, we would, we would relish an opportunity to explicitly in the brochure and marketing materials absolutely ban any percussion and any amplified music in the campgrounds. And marketing materials absolutely ban any percussion and any amplified music in the campgrounds, that is definitely our target. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think other than the date, most of us here aren't too concerned about the event, possibly more concerned about. Camping as we've never done that before, so.
And we, we understand that certainly, it is not, it's not something to dive into lightly, I think, uh, there are, there are some.
We've been camping with Ride the Rockies and it never seemed to cause a problem.
Usually bike riders aren't.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would say that our, our best approach to this is go slow, we're not, we're not trying to pack out these campgrounds. The reality is that we can very, very, very precisely tell you how many people we can fit comfortably into the baseball field. I took that number and dropped it by forty percent. I took the number of people we can fit in that meadow and were it a completely open field unrestricted and I cut it by seventy percent. So the amount of space that we are expecting people to occupy inside of these spaces is a very low density and. That is intentional, if we find that two hundred people or two hundred and fifty people inside of that meadow. Doesn't fill it out to the point where it feels like a, feels like a music festival tent city, then we would ask to increase that next year. But we are, we are definitely willing, we, it's more about kind of incepting our crowd to understand that. This is a new venue, this is a new field, we are, we are taking a model that has been very successful in Colorado and. And elsewhere, but certainly very successful in Colorado and kind of trying to emulate. Emulate that in Grand Lake for the first time and we recognize that doesn't come easily and we are very flexible in making sure that. All, all vested parties are considered before we go and try and blow this thing up. Don't get me wrong, if this is wildly successful and we find that we can be very successful with the density we're seeking this year. And we can progress this thing to be a larger event in following years, we certainly will, but we are. This isn't our first, this isn't our first rodeo and we are certainly aware of the things that can cause trouble, so. Camping is one of them, we, we considered a lot of different scenarios for trying to do camping for this festival, but. Those two properties definitely offer the best case scenario because no one is compelled to get in their car. There's very little even bike traffic as a result of it because it's such a close walk and. We wanna, wanna put some good folks in there, let them, let them have a good time and if we can add more in future years, we will, but we're, we're happy to keep it at a. A very mild, mild density for this first year and the reality is that. The vast, vast majority of people who are coming to this event are gonna be staying in short-term properties. They're gonna be in hotels and Airbnbs and there will be, I, I would anticipate that the camping for this festival will sell out within a couple of days of releasing. The information, so it will, it will be a, a high demand thing, but it will be a. A, a luxury product for the people who get to come to this festival because there's not going to be a large percentage, I mean, the reality is. It's not unreasonable to think that only fifteen percent of this festival will be camping.
Uh, how much for tickets, does it say in here, kind of what the range was gonna be for ticket prices?
We haven't talked about ticket prices yet because, uh, we haven't looked at talent, but to be clear, we are looking at bands that sell out Red Rocks. So when we say two thousand people, we're being conservative on our numbers.
Awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, the, if you want us to go big, we will, uh, the reality is that draw is a function of demand and. The ticket prices will represent that, but I think at the low end, we'll be looking at seventy-five bucks a day. And at the high end, we could be looking as high as ninety to a hundred, but that is a function of talent and we will. As, as this kind of progresses and we start making offers to talent, we will determine exactly what ticket prices will be, but as we've always done in the past. There is a, there's an entry level ticket that is extremely affordable and then as. You approach the event and as we start to see the scarcity of tickets available, they do tend to go up a little bit, but. Local prices will always get locked in, but the general public will see an escalating ticket price as the event approaches.
Okay, I would intend action at this time, thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you for listening.
Need to discuss more? Are we feeling like we can?
Historically, there's horses in this meadow car camping parking lot, have you guys had discussions about that? As well with the, um, property owner?
Yeah, we've talked to David Hile about it, I think it's, uh, the church's horses.
They're aware, the church is aware of everything and is planning accordingly. Motion?
I move to approve a new special event application for Yarmini Music LLC. Colorado Headwaters Festival Event on July tenth, twenty twenty-six and July eleventh, twenty twenty-six. With camping to be, um, considered and possibly approved later.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please pull the board.
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Nay.
Chuckley Shoner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Soban?
Aye.
Mayor Berquist?
Aye. The motion passes, thank you for considering us, I know that you all have been very respectful so far of. Bringing an event like this to town and, um, we'll continue to do hearing our concerns tonight, but we're excited to see what. What's an event like this brings, especially, um, with the music on the water. So we'll, we'll move forward, thank you guys.
Awesome, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, we'll move on to, um, consideration of ordinance zero-two dash twenty twenty-five. Uh, annexing to the town certain real property. And handing this to?
Angela.
Angela.
Angela Snyder with A Associates Hour, planner on this project, hi Angela.
Hi, good evening, Angela Snyder here. For the town of Grand Lake, so our property owners are Michael P Ruger Trust and Linda Ashley Randall Trust. In care of Michael Ruger and Linda Randall. The property is located at a hundred and twenty County Road six-six-three, also known as Summerland Park Road. This is an annexation request and so I'm going to talk a little bit about the background of the property and then, um, a little bit about. The annexation process and what requests are before you and part of that. So the annexation. Is a four point eight, eight acres of undeveloped land in between the. Boundary, the current boundary of Grand Lake and the water treatment plant. The intended use is seven single-family residential lots, which works out to about an average of a half acre each. There is an annexation agreement draft in your packet, which has been reviewed by our town attorneys. And there are terms which I'll go into much more detail later, but there is a nine lot limit, residential uses only. There are road requirements and there is a storm drainage requirement included. The property currently has access to town of Grand Lake water and Three Lakes Sanitation District, both of those. Um, are already. On the property or adjacent to the property. So, uh, the property is this one here, uh, with the blue marker. This is the water treatment plant for Grand Lake. And this is that West Portal Road right here. Here are some more images of the property, some aerial images. And, and please forgive me, these, these are my own personal outlines, they were not done by a surveyor and may not be exactly accurate, but it's close. So. We have the property, uh, having many, much of County Road six-six-three included. Here is another angle that shows a little bit of the topography going up that road to the water treatment plant. Next, we have some pictures of the road. Uh, this on the left is West Portal Road right here and this is going up the road. County Road six-six-three, here we are about midway, right after the Shadow Cliff turn. And then here is, in the third picture, we have, uh, the water treatment plant is right here. So this is getting into that parking lot for the trailhead. Up there. So the annexation process in Colorado is, is outlined in state statute, so, so the statute's very clear and. Um, we just follow what it tells us to do. So we received an annexation petition that came before you already, you determined that the property was eligible to apply. Uh, and you set a date for the annexation hearing. Staff reviewed the application, sent it for referrals to surrounding property owners and to all agencies required by the state. Including the county. And all taxing districts and mineral rights owners of record. The staff and applicant, oops, sorry. So then staff and the applicant worked out an annexation agreement. And then Planning Commission last week made a recommendation of zoning. And now here we are at number seven, the Board of Trustees is holding the public hearing for the annexation, so while you see in your agenda, this is not a quasi judicial. Hearing, it is still a public hearing, it's more, but it is a legislative decision to annex a property, which means that. You have the right to use subjectivity in your decision, it's not based on a list of criteria. In your code. So, uh, there is an error here, um. Our attorney Scott did correct me, it's a sixty-day appeal period after the annexation, so, uh. If you agree to annex this property tonight, then there is a sixty-day appeal period in which any, um. You know, taxing district agencies could, uh, appeal. Of course, we have referred to all of them and, and none of them have objected yet, but that is their right and so then once that period is done. Then the annexation would become effective. So. Uh, you have three decisions tonight to make. The first one is, is the annexation in, excuse the typo, in the interest of the town of Grand Lake? If so, what should the property be zoned? And what should be included as terms of the annexation agreement? So we'll work our way down the list, so the first one, why should the property be annexed? So first off, it does have water and sewer access. Uh, the state of Colorado does have, um, the town's ability to provide services to the property, one of, as one of the eligibility requirements. If annexed, the property would provide property taxes to the town of Grand Lake. For this property, uh, in twenty twenty-four, if it had been part of the town of Grand Lake. Would have contributed about seventeen hundred and sixty-one dollars. In, in assessments to the town of Grand Lake. And this would offset a portion of County Road six-six-three maintenance costs. If the property were annexed, the development control would fall into the hands of town of Grand Lake. This is obviously a, a property that whatever is developed on it would, would matter to the town of Grand Lake. So this, if you annex it, then you have control. Your design standards apply. And you would receive the impact fees, any park dedications. Any, um, affordable housing dedications or cash and loos would, would go to the town of Grand Lake. Which are likely, all of these are likely to be higher than, than the property taxes. And lastly, it would give you clear control over County Road six-six-three. The town already maintains County Road six-six-three at its own expense. So when normally we annex something, we consider the cost of maintaining a new road, but this road is already maintained by the town. But it's maintained through an unofficial agreement with the county and that is always carries with it some. Unclear. Unclearness. Lack of clarity, so. This would, uh, our public works and our, our water treatment. Uh, staff personnel both agree that they would really like to have control over County Road six-six-three so that they would know. That they can always have access to the water treatment plant. And it would also give you control of parking enforcement, although right now the National Park Service is providing parking enforcement. Even though it's a county road and, and they may continue to provide this in the future as well. So, uh, second question, what should the property be zoned? The applicant has requested single-family residential high density and that is also the zone district recommended by the Planning Commission. They were unanimous in their decision to accept this, uh, for one, it is a. It is consistent with the adjacent zoning. All of the dark blue that you see here is RSH zoning. Which is single-family high density, sometimes the high density you instantly think of multifamily, but this does not include multifamily. It's just single-family. Uh, it, the high density does allow for flexibility, so while the average. Lot size would be about a half acre. Going to the high-density zone district would allow for flexibility such as creation of smaller buildable lots or the definition of. Of natural areas or buildable, um, building envelopes. And. Uh, without having to change the zoning. So another. Point to consider with the single-family high, residential high density. Uh, just for your benefit, I have put up the dimensional requirements for that zone district with the other single-family. Op, options, so, uh, the main difference is that if it's a very low density, there's a fifteen-foot side. Setback and a fifteen-foot rear setback, whereas in all the other zones, it's ten feet. The size of a, a ADU. Uh, is, is much smaller in the higher density zone, so if. If they were to add an accessory dwelling unit, it would have to be smaller, it'd be in between that. Uh, five hundred and eight hundred square foot. And they could have smaller lots, the lots, the average lot size in Grand Lake is five thousand square feet, it's a fifty by a hundred foot lot. Uh, that is the zone, that is the minimum lot area in the RSH zone, so we would know that the lots created in this development. Would be at least five thousand square feet per home. So the last question we have is what should be included as terms of the annexation agreement? The initial requests by the applicant were that, were for the RSH zoning and to have no more than seven lots. The town of Grand Lake's initial requests in the negotiation of the annexation agreement. Were that County Road six-six-three, otherwise known as Summerland Park Road, would remain unpaved and unchanged in grade. And that future development will require drainage improvements to manage the runoff. In those negotiations, we have modified and, and these are the, these are the terms. Specific to this development that are in the annexation agreement in your packets. We have all agreed. We have all agreed that RSH is, is the right zone district. So that is what is called out in the annexation agreement. The city asked the applicant to raise the maximum number of lots to nine, just because there is a potential that if this property is subdivided in the future, that there would be a lot provided for the affordable housing. Uh, let's see. The affordable housing requirement for that inclusion, inclusionary zoning ordinance that you have. So the town knew that they would be receiving a lot and would like to have the option to perhaps divide it further or leave open the option that perhaps a lot, any one of the lots may, for one reason or another, need to be divided in the future. And having the ability to go to nine lots would leave that open. Oh, I'm sorry. So there is, there are terms, and I'll pull them up in their actual language here, that County Road 663 would not be required to be improved. So before, the town was saying, we want to put it in the agreement that it is not improved. In this case, we've modified it to say it should be improved as much as possible, but is likely to not require paving. And that future development will require drainage improvements. While you have the annexation agreement in front of you, just for the benefit of all present, I have put those specific terms. The rest of the agreement is the standard annexation agreement. So these are the only parts that are specific to this case. So this just calls out the RSH zoning in this first paragraph here. The second one, it calls out the nine parcels. And of course acknowledges that there will be future permits and approvals. We, we are not, we have not received any subdivision application at this time. So that's, that will have to go through our process, our, our standard review of a subdivision when that comes in. This is a typo, it is 663. Ignore that. But it does call out here that to the extent possible, the road will be brought up to town standards without impacting the current infrastructure. The parties agree that geographical consideration make it likely and practical to bring this road to town standards. Specifically, the road may not be able to be paved or brought to a grade of eight percent or less. The applicant continues to work with the fire department as well. And that's on how much the road needs to be improved. Drainage in the shoulder will be improved to accommodate a 1% annual chance flood. And the Rocky Mountain Trailhead and Water Plant access easement will remain in place, meaning that the town will continue to have access to their water treatment plant and, and the National Park Trailhead. So the Planning Commission was tasked with providing you with a recommendation for zoning. They also chose to provide some other comments that they wish the town board to consider. The Planning Commission unanimously encouraged to request a trail easement for a safe pathway from West Portal Road up to the trailhead. And that's because in the summer, sometimes with the limited parking at the top, a lot of people are parking on West Portal Road. And this would give them a safe path up County Road 663. There are some options for, for using a trail. Often, the town will be taking on the county existing right of way. And so a trail could be put in that right of way. Or a trail could, easement could be added to a future development plan. The commissioners also urged consideration of the cost of the annexation. The town already maintains County Road 663. The town will cover identified increased expenses with development fees and agreements. And the commissioners, and commissioners urged consideration of drainage concerns with forthcoming development applications. And I, I wish to assure you as the town board that we will review any and all drainage concerns with any subdivision or any other kind of development on the property. So we did notify surrounding property owners and we did receive three letters prior to the Planning Commission hearing. There, there was a request to attend the hearing virtually. And that, both this one and the previous one, and those link, the link was sent. Will there be an impact to property taxes? And the answer to that was yes, but only to those of the subject property. If annexed, the Ruger property would be assessed the 9.409 mils for the Town of Grand Lake. Will the property be able to be used for short term rentals such as Airbnb? The answer to that surrounding property owner question was that if it is zoned, RSH, nightly rentals will be allowed in the single family residence only. Nightly rentals will not be permitted in an accessory dwelling unit if one should be built. Due to the rugged terrain, will roadside parking be permitted? The answer given was the parking is not currently allowed on the Ruger property. There are signs posted. The town may enforce the parking rule once annexed, or the National Park Service may continue their enforcement of the no parking rule. And then there was a longer letter, but here it is paraphrased. Can there be a buffer between an existing residence at, at 1111 West Portal Road? And any new houses coming in because it is very near the property line? Rear and side setbacks in RSH are 10 feet. And the town is limited to only enforcing those zoning requirements in place. However, the applicant may propose voluntarily to put building envelopes on a subdivision plat, should they choose that, in which case that would provide a setback. The, there was a surrounding property owner comment received by the applicant prior to this board hearing, but it was not given directly to staff, but the applicant chose to give it to, to us so that we could have it as well. The surrounding property owner had a question regarding the annexation and if that has any effect on easements or prior agreements. So the title, a title commitment was required with the application. It was submitted. And it identified three encumbrances of record. It identified mineral owner rights, which are owned by the USA, a drainage easement, also owned by the USA, and an electric line easement owned by the Mountain Parks Electric, which may have changed names since the time of it, of the easement. None of these will be except, will be affected by the annexation. And any other easement that for some reason did not show up on the title commitment that is of record will not be, I mean, an easement is not affected by, by an annexation. So we as staff do our due diligence to make sure that all encumbrances of record appearing in a title search are accounted for in future development plats. So if there is an informal agreement, that is a civil matter, which is unaffected by annexation. The town will, will require evidence regarding any identified potential prescriptive easement as part of a subdivision process. But we are limited to those that we can find evidence of. Any new access or changes of use to an existing access are required to be reviewed by the Town of Grand Lake Public Works, unless associated with a subdivision application, in which case that access is reviewed by the town board as part of the subdivision approval. So those were just questions asked by the surrounding property owner. Hope to have addressed here. There were no members of the public that spoke at the Planning Commission hearing last week. So here we have come to it, your decision making tree. You have to decide approve or deny the annexation request, approve or deny the recommended zone district, RSH, approve or modify the annexation agreement, and then authorize the mayor to sign the annexation agreement. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also know the applicant is present and would also like an opportunity to speak.
Angela, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Angela. Nice job. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, everyone else. I, I really don't have anything to say. I'm just here for, if there's any additional questions that I can answer or add some color to. I think Angela did a excellent job of explaining exactly what, you know, what we're hoping to do.
Thank you, Mr. Ruger. At this time, I would like to open it up to any public comments that we have. Anyone that wants to speak on this issue. Please come on up. Yes, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Andrew Muller. Been here a couple times. It's been a pleasure to see you all. Thank you for having me, trustees. Got to know Mike over the past bit of time here, so got to know his project really well. And just wanted to convey that we're in support of the annexation. I think it makes good sense for the town to connect up to the planning. You know, like the trail access and other issues that we've worked on over the years are super important. So glad that that was on there. We have land that also follows through this area. Supports Mike to the, we're seeing the trust of the east. So if the town is interested in developing a trail, that's something that we would obviously like to contribute to because it makes sense to go through there as well. One thing that's not really noted on here is that we have a historical access up there as well that we've had for a long, long time, and we use that for our development. And we've used it for a lot of fire mitigation work we've done over the years. And we're working on a system project right now, community fire system, and we're up there as well alongside the fire department. So we're just working through a process with the trust to make sure that our access is maintained as, as a point of all this. So just wanted to bring it out to everyone's attention. And more than anything, just spent some time with you all tonight, learning about what was going on.
Thank you for coming and thank you for your comments. We appreciate your support and we do appreciate everything you're doing up on your property as well.
Do you guys have any access based on their annexation here as you loop around or anything? You guys use access from the north side there?
Yeah, it's the only access. There's a green gate just above. We actually own the Shadow Cliff access, that's part of our property. And we have a green gate just above there, which you can see it's been there for decades. It's where all the timberwork gets done. And it's the only way that we access our western portion of the property, considering the western side of Tonahoo too. From Tonahoo too over to that gate, that's our access point for that historic.
Any other questions for Mr. Mueller? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so trustees, we thank you, Angela, for your presentation. It was very organized, very informed, really appreciate that and laying out for us the decisions that we need to make. So shall we start with the first one? Comments?
The town's going to get one lot, but we can divide it into two, to two. So we'll get that for your charge. Subject to seeing the final plat, I think it's a good thing to annex. We'll all work on the plat together.
Explain the eight parcel deal here. I remember when the applicant came in last time, they discussed two different kind of possible structures on either side of the road. Where does this subdivision into nine lots come into play and benefit us?
So the discussion that was had, the, the seven lots, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ruger, it, it's not a specific number. It's six or seven. It could be as few as.
Six or seven, it could be as few as five. It depends, but that's part of his process moving along. The town, in all of these discussions, as far as what does the town get for that, is the opportunity to build some affordable housing that again, the town owns the property, which makes it an affordable way to be able to process and manage that. What we were looking at is that affordable housing doesn't need the size of lot that would be subdivided. So that's why we added one lot, but two houses. So that if we wanted to put a duplex or something on that piece of property that we could, for the affordable housing, that's certainly not the applicant's. That addition from seven to nine is purely for the town's benefit. So what we're doing, what we get from that is we get use tax property tax in perpetuity for five to seven homes. Water taps as well. And we get the security of having the road to the water plant in town.
My concern with the seven to nine lots is there's seven to nine driveways on an already questionable road, you know, we're talking culverts, driveways, setbacks. I'm totally for the annexation.
That's a part of the logistics of making it work. In my conversations with Mr. Ruger, it would be likely that there would be one road going either way, or perhaps one or two roads. But they would have to put in culverts going along 663. So it would be to their benefit to limit how often they cross across it. So.
And I'll make it better, I'll make it better as well. I, you know, I, I totally envision shared driveways, maybe not for each lot, but, but there, there, it makes sense to have a shared driveway and driveway would go left or right, you know, at a certain point. In addition, the driveway would be wide enough that if a fire engine needed to pull in, park on a somewhat level space and be able to back out, that needs to be considered as well. So the, the next step is to identify where the lots are going to be, what the building envelope looks like, and the access to that building envelope. But I, I totally anticipate at least a couple, two or three shared driveways.
Thank you.
So Mr. Ruger, based on the previous conversation you had with the board here, the vision of two houses, are you beyond that now? What's your guys' vision with regards to the last time you presented to us?
You mean for us personally?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it remains to be seen, I would say at the very minimum, two. The, the plan is to move slow and, and do this the right way and do what makes sense. But, but I would say two to three houses for us personally over time. Maybe more. In an ideal world, each, each, each sibling would, would have a home, but I'm not sure if that financially is going to work out, but we'll see. Any, any other questions for me?
Not specifically, Steve. So when we talk about maintenance of 663, we do every dollar of it. The county's not pitching anything, no plowing, no road base, no.
We put the road base on. And the other components. If it's annexed, we are able to do whatever work needs to be done on our water line underneath that without reaching out to the county to get permits on account of it. To me, that's kind of a good.
Does this also designate a lot?
No, there, it's just one envelope. Fill them, yes.
In previous conversations with regards to this topic, we talked about that the road has to be brought to town ordinance spec. That's not the case moving forward here.
Water superintendent. Water superintendent said not in our best interest to require them. Not in our best interest to pave it.
I agree on the paving.
But they, um, uh, the way that the main line is in there, it couldn't be done without the main line coming.
I'm, I'm essentially looking at the lowest portion as you enter off Portal. Fix that grade to the intersection there at Shadow Cliff. Or the continuous grade rather than something like that, you know? I mean, without going up there and watching when it rains and what water does, it's always a mess, I mean, any rain cycle, Portal Road is covered in salt material and road base and stuff like that, so.
Which is part of the requirement that would they'll be required to manage the water. And planning for that one person.
What's that one percent flood?
Hundred year.
I guess I've heard that word before, so I just wanna make sure.
So we got ninety-eight more to go.
I mean, yeah, I mean, well, and that's what I'm concerned about is, is, is we get another breach right there, we flood basements, now all of a sudden it's our responsibility to cover insurance costs based on previous events that we've seen up there, so.
And if the added benefit is lots for affordable housing, affordable is what we're saying? We have lots for that already. So that's something we're like, running for. They're an alternative agreement. Instead of lots that we could work into this?
Town staff has not been able to find one. The staff, the staff before me and staff. Been talking about it.
And the reason for pressing the annexation is for the subdivision? So you can subdivide these into smaller lots and sell them?
Go down and use our, use the water.
The water and sewer.
Water and sewer, yeah.
Since it runs right through the property.
Okay, I wasn't talking.
So no, no road improvements? I'm just, we, we just did a, a deal with someone over on Haskell where they had to improve their road. I'm just confused, and they weren't annexed, this is just for a built in their, their single family.
Some of that was to allow for the fire truck.
So are we basing a lot of our decisions based on the fire department's comments? Based on the final plat?
None of that, we still have the opportunity to make all of those decisions. A house, a house can't be built, right? If, if you approve this annexation, the land will then become part of the town of Grand Lake, much like the Matthews property, except it will be zoned residential, single-family, identity. Until a time comes that Mr. Ruger comes to us with a development plan, that they look to A, subdivide, or B, individually divide those properties one at a time, which is pretty costly because you have to do the whole thing anyways. Nothing changes.
Would we be able to sell the property we get? So we get two lots. Opulous, do we have to keep those two lots and we have to do the affordable housing or?
It's town land and typically towns don't sell land to make money. There has to be a reason to do that.
And speculations then.
Yes. Any other questions? Comments?
So part of that affordable housing, it doesn't say that we can't sell it. It says that they would be used for affordable housing. So the deed, the affordable housing is what would go with it. So for instance, what we have, the, the six lots, the six condos at Portal Crossing, these would be homes you could, you could consider to put them under a housing program.
Oh, so we don't, we're not owning the property or building the building?
We are.
Oh, we are owning.
We could sell that, it would always need to be affordable. We couldn't sell it to a speculator to put a million dollar house on there. Because that's part of the deal, that's what Mr. Ruger is getting is that we're putting two affordable units on there for the benefit of the town.
I just don't foresee anyone wanting to do that.
Do what?
Build affordable housing on those properties, put the costly building right down and make it affordable.
We give them two free lots? And they can build two fifteen hundred square foot homes?
Are you, are you saying you do the value in return in that for someone wanting to?
Very much so. Tiny homes.
Stephen and I saw one of them, they built a duplex.
We're having a hard time selling the ones at Portal Crossing.
Whole different animal.
The ones that we saw, they were like a hundred fifty bucks a foot. All in cost of the land. So he can make money on them.
I mean, financially, I think so, sure, I just, I couldn't see that work out. I'm thinking about Portal Crossing right now and how much it costs you to, to build an art space. And probably live in a really large water.
Good thing about this one is the water lines and the boats, the infrastructure's there, it's just the town.
Do you have any single family high density at the moment?
No.
What did we zone on? The Love Track for Stanley, is that single family?
Yeah.
I was, I thought, I thought it was open.
Well, that's the Matthews, the Love Track.
Love Track.
So when we rezoned those, we did.
Yeah, and this is the, this is the blow your thing. That's the, this is all the single family. It just looks beautiful. Is that what I'm saying?
So what are all the properties on Portal Road currently, for the most part?
Single family identity.
Okay, they are. Sorry, the map makes it really hard to.
Difficult map to read.
The only other option is like, I'll pick them.
It's medium density.
Well, let's stay on task. Get back to the, the things that we need to vote on here.
Right, I, I just wanted to see continuity in zoning, that, that was my.
Which is the extension of it.
Which is that, okay.
And it, it seems to make opposite sense, so that you understand our code. High density is the lowest setbacks. Medium density has bigger setbacks, low density has bigger setbacks. So owing to this piece of property where just finding building envelopes will be challenging, that's why the high density, because there is ten feet, ten feet, and fifteen, twenty on the back.
So we are, we are seeing.
Our investment cost is very low. Still with us, Mr. Ruger?
Thank you for being patient.
No, I'm, I'm here. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Any more questions for anyone, or I would entertain action on this item?
I, I move to approve ordinance O two dash two oh two five, annexing to the town certain real property located in unincorporated Grand County at one twenty County Road six, six, three, zoning such as property, single families, residential, high density, and authorizing the mayor to sign the associated annexation agreement.
I have a motion.
Second.
And two seconds. Please pull the board, Mrs. Weeks.
I have a question before we vote.
Yes.
There is one sixth continuity on town property, I just felt like I didn't hear that mentioned.
Yes, there is.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All good, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Weeks, please pull the board.
Dusty Miller.
Hi.
Dusty So.
Hi.
Dusty Shoner.
Hi.
Mayor Proctor and Sobon.
Hi.
Mayor Burquist.
And I, the motion passes. Thank you Angela for all of your hard work on this, thank you Mr. Ruger and thank you Mr. Mueller for being patient with us and getting through this, and, uh, we appreciate, um, we appreciate all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Welcome to Grand Lake.
Yes.
Welcome to Grand Lake.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay. Moving on. Need my glasses, sorry, I'm getting tired tonight. Uh, the request to continue consideration of shoreline variance on lot six, Shadow Point, more commonly referred to as three hundred Lake Drive to date certain after May seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Trustees, at the most recent Planning Commission meeting, planning commissioners held a public hearing and they, um, needed more time to make their decision. As a result, they, um, requested that the shoreline variance be moved to May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Am I so far so good Angela, are you supposed to be doing this part?
You're doing great, but I'm happy to help.
Um, the most recent date certain after the May seventh date would be the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting. Staff is requesting that you continue your consideration of shoreline variance to May twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I would entertain action on this.
I move to continue consideration of a shoreline variance for a boat dock at three hundred Lakeside Drive to May twelfth.
Second.
Motion in a second, please pull the board.
Dusty So.
Hi.
Dusty Shoner.
Hi.
Dusty Miller.
Hi.
Mayor Proctor and Sobon.
Hi.
Mayor Burquist.
Aye, the motion passes. Item F, consideration of ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty-five to approve compensation for planning commission.
Thank you Mayor Burquist. In twenty twenty-one, the Board of Trustees voted to, um, change the town code to allow for compensation of the Board of Trustees. Since that time, um, trustees have not become wealthy on their wage, but it is, um, a good sense of the appreciation of the town, um, in providing this stipend. Currently, the members of the Planning Commission do not receive any compensation at the, at the time that they put into the governance of Grand Lake, they are appointed for six-year terms. As the town takes on more and more projects and sees greater economic growth, the time required of the commissioners has increased substantially. These time commitments have become a barrier for many of our citizens who may be interested in holding a six-year appointed office. This is also one of the positions where it specifies that you must be a bona fide resident of the town of Grand Lake, where election law guides the qualifications to become, uh, qualified, qualified to run for election. The town of Grand Lake has more stringent qualifications, such as requiring, um, public utilities or other proof of residence that is not required by the state. Serving on the Planning Commission is more than just the time that it takes, it's also a financial burden, many young parents need to pay just for daycare, just to be able to attend the meetings. Many towns in our area have addressed the problem of attracting candidates by providing some level of compensation. These include the towns of Granby, Fraser, and Winter Park. I've noted the pay rates of those jurisdictions, fifty dollars in Granby, a hundred dollars in Fraser, and three hundred dollars in Winter Park. In general, the payments don't come close to providing a reasonable compensation, but it does allow commissioners to cover the incidental costs associated with their service. Several communities require attendance at scheduled meetings as a prerequisite to receiving compensation for that meeting or that time period, meaning if you don't attend a meeting, you don't get paid.
Are you action or just discussion, consideration?
So commissioner pay is subject to both state statute and local code. Our town code states that commissioners shall serve without compensation. As such, any commission pay must be approved by ordinance. I have provided you with a copy of an ordinance, should you like to do that. Um, in addition to offering cash compensation, you might offer as a measure of compensation, reduce the free membership to town activities such as recreation memberships. These benefits would be allocated as compensation to the commission's compensation line item. What I want to make clear of that is if you were to say that commissioners get membership to the Grand Lake Center, that membership would cost back to the commission. It's a benefit, it wouldn't just be a freebie. That would show up on the revenue line to the Grand Lake Center. Maybe it'll get us a couple more memberships.
From their white item in the budget.
Yeah. So the extent would be six hundred a year for a family membership?
With regards to when the Board of Trustees started their, uh, compensation, that was only based on you.
Because it cycled when you were elected.
Correct. But for them, it would be instantaneous.
Correct, because they're appointed. So you are providing a benefit to the person that you appointed.
I say, I don't think, I don't think you get to double dip.
He already asked for it.
Gonna kick myself in the back.
Think we should have changed some things before we took our new position.
Ducks were not in a row.
Uh, no, they were not. No. Uh-uh. Not. Is, you didn't.
It's from a movie.
Oh, yeah, you could.
Were the Millers?
Love that movie.
Um.
So are we on board to, as a board, um, to help out the planning board?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I think we should make them pay us a field shift.
Um, so on here we see Granby, Fraser, and Winter Park, what they're paying their per, what they're paying their commissioners. You guys have any thoughts about where we fit in on that?
I say fifty's minimum, um, do they also get a furl?
Uh-uh, no furl.
Sure.
Yeah, but I, a fifty's minimum, I'd say a hundred.
I, I agree with the hundred.
I mean, I, we, once we go mono y mono, we get here at four thirty, we're here till, let's at least say an average of eight thirty, that's four hours. I only went to about a year's worth of planning meetings, but there's only one that went three hours and it was a doozy.
A lot of them get canceled.
A lot of them get canceled, the ad just, if there's no items of discussion now, we are obviously pursuing these code changes and revisions and stuff like that, so I would expect that although there isn't a new plat coming through or variance, whatever the case may be, they will be pretty consistent.
Oh, yeah.
I think my range is fifty to a hundred.
Yeah, I'm fifty to seventy-five.
I think that's important from your perspective of being on there, sitting on there, especially for those that will do both seats, maybe.
We're working on that.
Yeah. Thinking about ready to break.
So you're saying average meeting, hour and a half, two hours?
Facts, yeah, it's pretty quick, try to round it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with fifty to seventy-five. Um, but I, I do think some compensation is more than necessary.
Okay, seventy-five.
I'm fine, I'm fine with either. So three dollars.
Okay, well, I would entertain action on this item then, since we're kind of.
And are we not looking at chairman any differently, anything like that, just pretty flat?
Across the board.
Across the board.
Around sixty?
Thirty, that's thirty bucks an hour, basically, at the end of the day. For the most part.
A sitter is.
Thirty bucks. At least that is what you charge, right?
No one trusts me to wash their hands.
I think, I think there's only grandchildren in any condition.
Got it.
There is, but I mean, we also want to make an open position appear.
Yes.
I think it's really hard right now.
You're fair.
Sixty.
Let's do it.
Hey, somebody, give me some action here, please.
I don't think there is an action listed, but I'm, I'm making a motion to approve ordinance number zero three twenty twenty seven, ordinance setting compensation for planning commission board members at sixty dollars a meeting.
Very nice, thank you. I have a motion in a second, please pull the board.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Shoner.
Hi.
Trustee So. Mayor Procton Soban.
Hi.
Mayor Burquist.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you to our commissioners for all they do and meeting with us today. Uh, G, request to appoint Fraser trustee Adam. See, how, how, good night.
Quicklin.
Quicklin?
Mm-hmm.
Quicklin, as Grand County Municipal Utility Representative to the Colorado Basin Roundtable.
Colorado Basin Roundtable is established for background in conservation, municipal water, and wastewater. One member from each county is, is appointed jointly by the governing bodies of all the municipalities within the region. Um, trustee Quicklin has, um, stepped up with a willingness to do this. Um, he has provided his, um, resume in this area, as well as he did call today, um, and expressed interest. This is not a paid position. Um, it is not a position that anybody on our water depart, department expressed, uh, area to represent, and I think it would be in the better, best interest of the town of Grand Lake to have trustee Quicklin serve us. And I just need a motion.
Does trustee Quicklin understand our, our water needs over here?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition, um, county commissioner, Linky, and, um, county manager, Ed Moyer, are also part of the roundtable. Excellent.
I'll move. I move to recommend Adam Quicklin, um, Fraser Town Trustee, to serve as Grand County Municipal Utility Representative through the Colorado Basin Roundtable.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, please pull the board.
Trustee Shoner.
Hi.
Trustee So.
Hi.
Trustee Danny Miller.
Hi.
Mayor Procton Soban.
Hi.
Mayor Burquist.
Aye, the motion passes, thank you. Next, we have future items for consideration. Trustees, what do you have for myself or manager food drunk? And I'm not hearing any, so.
We do, we, we do have a number of things that are on both for the worksheet as, for the workshop. As I talked about, we'll be talking about priorities for code. Um, we'll also be starting to look at some of the other code revisions. Um, I'll also be working with our, um, local planning capacity grant in Taro this coming week to be able to start working on some recommendations for you for code changes to support our affordable housing initiative. Right, anything for me?
We'll be talking project manager stuff as well.
Something that we talked about?
If we've, we've been, I've been working with MA Studios as well as discussions
Oh, for that project.
For owners of project managers, space decree.
I thought you meant internal project management.
Space decree.
Is that a conversation you had or just you and I?
Yeah, all of us at one time or another just made this.
Separate project management, kind of, you and I.
Oh, um, I'm still working on, um, staff acceptance to doing something like that before I spend money. Project management software.
Oh, God. This one's easy, click and drag.
Okay, um, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Um, I don't really have much of a report today, it's kind of quiet in town, it's the beginning of mud season, which we all thread. Um, I'd like to say, you know, everybody's feeling the same way, be patient, be kind. If you're home, get out of your house, still go out in town, go to the restaurants and support your businesses, uh, when they're open. Smile on your face, we'll, we'll all get through this together. Um, I'd also like that the trustees, um, I'm just asking right now, as Stephen and I kind of move forward with the retreat piece, I would love to hear from you guys, uh, be it phone call, email, coffee or cocktail, let's have a conversation of what you'd like to see from me as the mayor for the next year, and also what the things are that you'd like to see, um, at the retreat. Anything that you have of concerns, um, questions. Uh, I, I just would really like to hear from you guys individually as we move forward. That is, uh, the other thing that I was going to mention, just so we're all on the same page, there may be a little confusion, I'm not sure. The Yarmini that we approved tonight is for twenty twenty-six. And it is not twenty twenty-five. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, so everything that we discussed tonight, um, and approved is for twenty twenty-six. Okay, so they're going to take a full year and, uh, they also needed the extra time to organize their music, so. No!
None of us realized it until after the fact, either.
It, it's good.
This train was coming really fast there.
So, okay, well, I would entertain, entertain one more action for this evening.
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I have a motion?
Second.
And two seconds again, please pull the board.
Hi.
Trustee So.
Hi.
Trustee Shoner.
Hi.
Mayor Procton Soban.
Hi.
Aye, the motion passes, the meeting is adjourned.
Woo!
I'm running on three hours.